I'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Obviously, I am not the mayor, Tim Bussie. He is on his way, is what I've heard. And then we've got one other member who is on their way. For tonight's meeting, we've got a special meeting this evening that is focused around our public finance and our budget. So we've got one item to cover, which is 2.1, which is 2025 budget discussion around our public health, finance, international, internal service teams, the general fund, the employee benefits, and information technology and communications. So I see that Kari is already there and can begin our presentation.
Good evening, council. So the first budget discussion we're going to have is public health. So I will invite Public Health Administrator Nick Kelly to come up, and I will raise the microphone for him.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So what we'll be talking about tonight briefly is our 2025 budget versus the 2024 budget comparison, breakdown of the budget, staffing requests, new initiatives, revenue enhancements, and what would happen if we make some modifications. This gives you a high-level overview of the general fund that we had in 2025. You can see the 23, 24 budgets, 23 actual. Our budget's around eight and a half million dollars. The next slide really goes into some of the changes we've seen. And so I'll call attention to some of the new funding we received. We were able to get new grant resources from the state as their investment in public health, which really is helping us move forward of the foundational public health services that we're trying to deliver in the community. And so you'll see we brought in a little over a million dollars in new funding corresponding to the nine new staff we were bringing on board to do that work. That funding was fairly focused on new things, new staff, new processes, which is what we used it for with a workforce consultant to guide that work. We took over some of the social service support that coed was sponsoring into the community. So you'll see that there. And then our internal service charges and then some other balancing out we've done there in the budget. So our net impact was $114,000. Would note that in this 25-budget year, 74% of our budget is supported by grants and contracts. As far as our staffing requests go, we have no new staffing request that we're looking for for the 25-year. As we think to the future, we're continuing to evaluate what's going on in the community that we serve in that process. Mental health is something that we're continuing to navigate very closely with our partners in Bloomington PD and in our partners with Edina and Richfield. We are in a service deficit area. HERSA identifies parts of Bloomington, the northeast corner, as a service deficit. We are short of providers for mental health, primary care, and dental. And so we're fairly focused on the mental health side, given our community health assessment and the continuing needs around mental health and the work we're doing with PD. We're going to continue to see evolution of how public health is practiced and navigate that at the state level, which may impact how we do some of our work down the road. As far as enhancing service delivery, we are going to continue to work with PD. The Brain Health Initiative that Chief Hodges and his team have put together has just been remarkable to see the progress and the impact in the community. And our team is there to support that process on the data analysis on the back end and supporting the protection of the data infrastructure. It's how the data that they're collecting is housed on our end. So we have a very strong separation between the law enforcement and the public health side to protect the patient data. And that progress, the program has been incredible to see, and we're seeing those real benefits. And it's been a pleasure to coordinate with PD to navigate that work with our healthcare partners, to try and show them an innovative approach to solving a really intractable problem in our community. We're continuing to look at those social supports and the needs in the community to meet those. We are working with OREB and other partners around the city and in Edina and Richfield to do some enhanced training to our staff across the three cities. And then our new staff are really helping us do a bunch of stuff we've not done before. So for instance, today was the first day for a community health worker focused around housing and being able to help navigate the nuance of service challenges in the health and housing interface and be able to work with our HRA and other partners to help us change policies and systems to improve the health of our community. We're going to be able to tackle work on climate resilience and improving that help with our sustainability coordinator and work we're doing with our response sustainability grant, things we've not been able to do in the past with this new funding. So it's exciting to see some of those new projects take off as our staff start to come Some of the potential revenue enhancement which we're looking at is we're really carefully looking at the needs and the challenges in our community and what else we can do. There are services we've done in the past that we stopped doing because the need was not there. Some of those needs are starting to creep back up. Those are potentially opportunities for us to charge for some services, depending upon what they are. Some of those deal with more sexual health, navigating some of those nuances and challenges. And then we're continuing to work very closely with the local Public Health Association to look for additional state investment to make public health what we want to see it today. There's a goal to have this seamless responsive public health system in Minnesota, so no matter where you are, you have access to the same basic public health services, which does not occur today. We are integrally involved in that process. We are just meeting this afternoon up in the Chadwick with the joint leadership team that's helping guide that work. And so I expect we will continue to see additional funding at the state level to help do that work across Minnesota, which will directly impact our ability to do work here. And then we're continuing to evaluate service delivery and opportunities for navigating with insurance. Oftentimes, we find that a challenge because the months to years it takes to get those agreements in place and the amount of revenue we get back often aren't worth the time. But we're continuing to look at that whenever we have opportunities. As far as service reductions and impacts, one of the things we all want to see is to be that enduring remarkable community where people want to be. And key to that is the people want to be. So we really see our role is really helping to work across the city to ensure that people have their full chance to be healthy, healthy and well. And the more we have a healthy and well community, the easier it is for us to accomplish our strategic plan and achieve that mission that BTT sets out. We directly impact our local economy with over a million dollars in WIC vouchers, and we're regularly recognized across the state and sometimes the country for our innovative and forward-leaning policies. And so if some of those things stopped happening, we would see those immediate consequences on the WIC end and long-term consequences in the health and wellbeing of the community and the recognition of Bloomington as a leader. That is our budget for this year.
Well, thank you for bringing that forward. I only have to take issue with one thing you said. Well, I think it's worldwide recognition. I certainly have some questions. I wonder if my colleagues have some. I'd like to start with our resident expert, Councilmember Carter. I know she serves on our shack and has served on a number of other health-related things and has some expertise, and I figure it makes sense to start there. What's your favorite?
Yeah, so thank you, Dr. Kelly. I will say I was meeting with a leader from Fairview earlier today, and he actually brought up Dr. Kelly and Chief Hodges and the Brain Initiative and just how exciting it is and how great Bloomington has been to work with, and so kudos to you guys. One question that I did have related to the budget, so the grant-funded positions that you mentioned, are those longer-term grants? And do you anticipate that eventually you would be coming to City Council to ask for resources to continue those positions? Or are you anticipating, maybe that's a possibility, but there's a good chance of additional state funding that would continue, allow us to continue those positions?
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, majority of that funding, so there's some opioid-funded positions in there, which is an 18-year timeframe. The rest of that funding, aside from a small amount of CDC infrastructure funds, is in the base budget of the state. And so we anticipate that funding to be there for a very long time. But that being said, we do recognize that around 2027, our cost of living and other things associated with those staff will exceed the grant budget, and that's what we are planning on navigating with council support.
Okay, thank you. I do want to just say that being in the public health community, the city of Bloomington Public Health really is seen as a leader in the state, a place that people look to for best practices. And being in, being on the shack, I am in communication with public health administrators and county commissioners from across the state. And I think I can confidently say, and I think I've said this in the past, that they all wish that they had what we have in Bloomington. And hopefully, eventually, these state resources, the infrastructure funding will allow that to happen. But I think in the meantime, I do, I do feel very fortunate to be in the place that we are in, Bloomington. And I also think this department is just, I don't know, I, of course, I'm biased, but I think it just pays for itself over and over again, not only because it gets so much grant and contract funding, but just the immediate and long-term impacts that it has in the community is immeasurable. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Other council questions?
Oh, did she? Councilmember Rivas? Go ahead.
Thank you. I always need reminding of that. What is the amount, if any, that the taxpayers in Bloomington provide for your budget at this moment? And in the future, in the near future, what would it be if that was the case, like in 2027, as you mentioned?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, we will see the, the impact is, it's $2.1 million, $2.16 in 2025's budget. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, we, we will see the continued kind of increase that we see on a regular basis, where we see that increase in internal services and associated costs associated with our staff will go up at a fairly constant rate that we can, we can look at. I don't have, I don't have the 27 projections in front of me, but we can certainly work.
And if I can, if I can jump in, our manager will, will speak to this and just, you know, just from my own background too, I've asked this many a times, you know, can you give me a 10-year, you know, readout? And the manager would normally say, hey, well, once you start getting past a couple of years out, it gets pretty tricky to, to give a reliable number. And I know we try to be careful with that because our residents and, and other folks in the community are paying attention to that. So, manager, I'll let you kind of take it from there.
Thank you, Acting Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilmember Rivas, as Acting Mayor Lomond said, when we're preparing the budget for our internal review and presentation to the council, we're preparing a two-year budget cycle, and so we have a conceptual 2026. We don't have 2027 forecasted yet. Now, you, you're familiar with seeing some of the longer-term forecasts in a number of our funds. Those tend to be enterprise funds or capital funds so that we can forecast and utility funds because they have a lot of reinvestment activity and long-term financial planning that goes into those funds. It's a little different than our regular operating funds. What you'll see, as Dr. Kelly said, is some incremental increase in the general fund for supporting public health. One of the issues that we run into is the many positions that are grant-funded. The grants tend to only cover the staff costs related to delivering that particular service, which typically means salary and benefits, and usually doesn't include some of the other overhead costs that we assign to departments. So things like our IT costs and, you know, chargebacks from administration or finance, those other places, aren't factored in. So you'll see a little bit of growth in our general fund operations that are just related to the cost of having employees, and those are costs that aren't supported by the grant. So there's a little bit of an increase each year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mua?
Thank you. Dr. Kelly, can you please remind us and myself how we work with Edina and Richfield when it comes to the Edina, Bloomington, Richfield Public Health Services?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mua, we have a longstanding relationship that even predates our contractual relationship that we have today. We, depending on the revenue stream, whether, so for example, our statewide health improvement program, we get that funding directly from the state with an allocation, including Edina and Richfield. For some of our program areas, we get our allocation in Edina and Richfield, get their direct, and then they contract that to us. We do that with all of our funding streams, and then we also have a shared services agreement where it covers all the other things that we don't get dedicated funding streams to. And that is a negotiated process based on our costs on the back end that the three-city managers sit down on a regular basis and look at and make sure it's an accurate representation of how we move forward.
So just to recap, essentially, Edina and Richfield are participating in providing capital for us to do our services. We're not just doing it for free for those two cities. We're being reimbursed to allow us to do more than what we would normally do just by ourselves.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mua, when I talk about that $1.1 million coming in, two, we're getting the resources for three community health boards to do this work, where many of my peers are getting the resources of the one.
Now, thank you for that. That's always a good question that folks typically have about this and that, that whole relationship between Edina and Richfield is, is an important one that we maintain. And it's always important that we're making sure, and I know in the past years, we've, we've had that conversation, so I don't want to rehash that. One question I did have, you had mentioned that there was 74% of the budget that's covered by grants and other, other funding, which I think is really kind of pretty unique. And of course, my, my first question would always be, well, how do we compare to other, other cities? But there's really not really any other cities that are like us that would have that comparison. So I won't ask that question of, of that right now. But is there any fear at all with, with having that much in terms of being sustainable year over year with having 74% of that coming from these, these outsour, outside sources in terms of, you know, being able to maintain staffing positions and just, you know, just general service, you know, provision to the, to our residents out there? Any concerns at all about that?
Mr. Mayor, what, the, the reality of our funding stream is the majority comes from grants and contracts. And so those grants and contracts are typically long-term and stable, but if we don't change any service delivery and we don't see changes in those funding streams, that percentage will continue to drop over time as the cost of operating and doing the work increases. And so that's always the balance and, and the work that we're always trying to do to make sure that we're doing the right work with the right resources. The range of percentages you see out there vary from fairly low to, we do have community health boards in Minnesota that are, are well north of 50% of their funding coming outside of grants and contracts.
Well, thank you for that. And, you know, and I don't, I won't look for an answer today because I don't want to put anybody on the spot. I sometimes do that. I don't mean to do that. But, you know, if there are things that we could do to help stabilize that, you know, and create some certainty there, I would, would love to hear that, you know, if there, if there are ways in which that we could kind of go about that process of trying to, I don't know if there's a way to, you know, like we've done with, with the budget where we try to create some stabilization funding, like we've done that with our overall budget. I'm not sure if that's a tactic that could be utilized here with, with this budget to create some, some wiggle room so that leadership in this area can have some dependability year in, year out, when we get to those times where there's kind of a down, downtrend with those dollars that are, that are kind of coming in. So that's just, you know, kind of more of a, of a comment rather than a, than a question.
If I may, Mr., Acting Mayor Lomond, to that point, and I appreciate that point, as Dr. Kelly indicated, with the number of grants and contracts that we receive and that we administer, the, the best way to ensure future funding of, of those grants, so long as the, the grants don't disappear entirely, which is always a possibility when you're talking about some intergovernmental opportunities, but as long as the grant funding is consistent, the best way to ensure that we're going to be competitive for those going forward is to make sure that we are demonstrating success in achieving the objectives of the grants that we've received so far. And I think that's one thing that public health has done really well at, is not just performing to the expectation of the grant or the contract, but it's also being able to, you know, document the outcomes that we are achieving. I also think it's important to note that several years ago, we went through an exhaustive process. an exhaustive process for our public health division, uh, to be an accredited, uh, public health agency, which, uh, confers on it, uh, a significant amount of, um, credibility, uh, for, uh, the grant funding community.
You know, thank you for that, that reminder of that. I know that Councilmember Nelson had served on that and a number of other folks may have. Are there any other questions that we have? Uh, Councilmember De La Sana?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Um, good evening. I'm sorry to have been late today. Appreciate you all being here. I just had, uh, two quick things. One, I actually found this budget fairly easy to understand. I think, um, you all are doing a pretty good job of, of balancing your expenses to revenue here. And, uh, but, you know, it's, it's always nice to see, um, that you guys run that very well. And I know that a big part of what you're doing, um, is rightsizing staffing to meet, um, the obligations that we are able to pay for as opposed to having staff. I'm curious, um, and I, and I apologize because I was late. Have we gotten to the discussion around the 2025, like new things that are happening? Or is that still pending? Did we go, did we go through that? That enhancing service delivery slide? Okay, great. Well, then I'll ask a quick question about that. And I apologize if you answered it during your discussion. So, um, I am kind of, I'm kind of, uh, curious about the new staff, uh, around increased housing and health. I'm, I'm curious about what specific, um, programming we are going to see you performing out in the community that we've not yet seen that's directly tied to that enhancement?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember De La Sando, uh, the specific work we're going to be doing is meeting a gap in a need right now. And so there's not per se like a specific program or a process, but what we hear from all of our partners, whether it's our community-based organizations or HRA, is the need is immense. The ability to navigate people through that system is incredibly complicated and frustrating. And what we've done is we've brought on a community health worker that will help people walk through that process. And on the backend inside, we are going to be looking at the, the systems and the processes and why they're not working the way they should be and ideas of how to improve that. And so they're going to be walking alongside community members, navigating the challenges of housing and health. On the backend, we're going to be looking for how do we work to address the, the challenges in those systems, uh, with our health and all policy staff and some of our other leadership in the division to make things better from a system standpoint.
And does that, um, does that work go back to then both the county and the state boards that you are, uh, that we are a member of? I know that you mentioned we've got some strategic initiatives happening at the state around, around public health systems themselves and how to be- better serve them. Is that, is that part of the feedback that you're going to take to those boards?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember De La Sando, uh, yes, uh, with a caveat of that feedback's going to mostly go back to our partners, um, whether it's the county or HRA or other processes we see. And then the narrative about how we're working to try and change those systems will be part of the reporting the state expects from us, uh, for that funding.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. The only other comment I had is I noticed in the, in the, uh, budget that, that we have a, um, we have a line item, and maybe this is for you, uh, Kari. I apologize if it is. Didn't mean to stick you with a question. But there's a section here about capital outlay. I'm just curious, on a going-forward basis, when we get to like 26, 27, and we start seeing the Public Health and Wellness Center built and everything, are we going to start carrying some kind of a capital number in the public health budget going forward?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember, uh, De La Sando. So yeah, we do, that is, um, there's nothing on there for capital outlay. It's just sort of the standard categories that we have in these different budget reports often. And when the new Community Health and Wellness Center is created, it is going to be its own enterprise fund. So yes, there will be, um, amounts budgeted out for a capital outlay within that, um, based on what is recommended to have for that facility. So there's still a lot of, um, analysis to be done that's been, being done. But that will be similar to like an ice garden budget or a, um, you know, other facility. It'll be another recreation facility type fund.
Okay. So maybe the question I should ask is then, we, we would not expect some portion of that to be carried in the public health budget going forward, given that some portion of that building is not recreation, it is public health?
Yes. Uh, Mayor, um, Councilmembers, Councilmember De La Sando, that, um, there'll be, I don't know that we've determined exactly how it will work out, but within those internal charges right now, there's a space and occupancy charge from the facilities fund for the current public health building, which is pretty minimal with, um, the maintenance on that building right now. But there'll be something similar in their internal charges as a portion of that, um, new Community Health and Wellness Center enterprise fund. So they'll have some kind of shared charges, um, to be determined exactly what that will be, but would probably show up in the internal charges.
Okay, that's helpful. So not so much in capital outlay, but in that intergovernmental chain charges? Thanks, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just raised one other question, you know, that Councilmember Muwa sort of raised. And I'm, I'm already making an assumption, but I figured I'd better ask this question because maybe somebody at home was thinking the same thing. So how does that work with our relationship with Richfield and Edina? Is, is that something that, that's a part of that? Or is that something separate in terms of, will, will we charge back any of that because our staff are there? Is that, you know, handled through? And if you don't know the answer, you don't, don't feel obligated to respond right now. It's just something I kind of came up with off the top of my head here.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, our current process for our shared services, uh, has a component that covers the space and occupancy and, uh, and a ratio of how we distribute that across the three cities.
I assume that was the case. All right. Well, I think you maybe had enough of the hot seat tonight? Oh, we got one more question for the, for the hot seat here.
Just to satisfy, satisfy my curiosity. Uh, um, I understand that for salaries and benefits, you have $4.2 million listed. And for supplies and services, it's a $2.5 million. Is that a normal operational system for any health, uh, uh, city or state? Is that normal to operate that way with such a high, uh, salaries and benefits as do the services provided to the public?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Rivas, uh, included in that the material service, uh, supplies, that $2 million is, uh, our WIC benefits. So for the, the vouchers that are being provided for our WIC recipients, that we have to account for it in that line. So that's, uh, a little over a million dollars more than what you would normally see.
Right. I, I, let me rephrase the question though. Is it normal to have such a, such a high salaries and benefits for staff higher than the services provided when it comes to the, the, the amount of dollars? Is it normal for any of the health departments to work that way?
Well, let me, let me, let me jump in on that one. You know, when we look across really almost all of our budgets, um, in the city, uh, say a few other ones, uh, typically, uh, it's that, you know, it's those salary and benefits that is, is going to be some of the highest amounts. And, and I don't know, manager, if you want to jump in and talk about that, it's just, you know, I've, I mean, I've seen that for years, uh, that way. And the one other thing I wanted to mention too, since we're talking about the supply part of the question, uh, Councilmember Rivas, is that, you know, I'm not sure how much of our, um, home visits are a part of any of that, um, part of that.
Well, uh, Acting Mayor Lohman, Councilmembers, Councilmember Rivas, I think the, uh, the best way to answer this is it's, I don't know if it's comparable to other public health departments, uh, divisions in terms of what they're doing. But you have to, uh, take a look at the services that we provide or the systems work that we're doing to figure out what is the right balance or ratio of, of staffing to, um, services. So in addition to the, the WIC, uh, that Dr. Kelly mentioned, um, we run immunization clinics, right? So you're going to see a fair amount in supplies there for, uh, immunization and vaccines. And, uh, then we have a few other services, but for the most part, the work that, uh, our public health staff is doing is, uh, one-to-one client service. And so you're going to see a relatively high, um, proportion of staff cost related to service cost. That's different than, say, the Public Works Department where they have an awful lot of material costs, uh, they have an awful lot of equipment cost. Here, the, the work is very, um, human-centric. And so, uh, I think that, that ratio of staff to total operating budget is, uh, entirely reasonable considering the type of work they do and, and how they do it.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you much, Nick Kelly, uh, for a great presentation.
Thank you for all your support.
I think, uh, our next item is the, uh, finance.
All right. So yes, um, I will be presenting the details of the Finance Department 2025, uh, budget request here in a second. As we're bringing up that presentation, you'll see the agenda will look very similar to the one that we just did for public health. So like many of the other department, uh, budget presentations, um, my agenda is going to start with a comparison between the 2024 and 2025 budgets and then a break, um, a breakdown of those key budget changes. We'll talk about some future staffing needs that we're seeing in the Finance Department, some new initiatives that we're working on, uh, revenue enhancements that we're helping with, and impacts of potential service reductions in the Finance Department. So, um, I'm just going to spend a little bit more time, um, on this, um, summary. So comparing 24 to 25, the Finance Department's budget request has a 5.84% increase in expenditures. However, the overall budget has a reduction of $1,119. And I want to explain, uh, why this is. So this is due to, um, the increase in expenses charged back to other funds. So, um, on some of these budgets in the general fund, you'll see that the general fund departments have chargebacks to the non-general fund, funds. So, um, in order to accurately reflect the total costs of the cost of service in those other funds, so like we're talking about the utility funds or the recreation facility funds, so that they have chargebacks for legal and HR and accounting and payroll and all of those things. So in 2024 budget right now, approximately 58% of finance expenses were charged back to those non-general fund entities. And that is increasing to, um, to 60% of the 2025 budget request. So that's an increase of about $239,000 that you can see there, which is kind of reducing our overall budget impact on the property tax levy. And so, um, just to take a, some more explanation, the percentage of Finance Department's expenses that are charged back to those, um, non-general fund funds are higher in total compared to some of the other general fund departments because two of the divisions in finance are 100% charged back to other funds. So our risk management, um, activity within the finance that's in those expense lines is 100% charged back to the self-insurance fund. And all of utility billing, all of those charges, the staff that are in utility billing, is 100% allocated among those four utility funds. So that makes our chargebacks a little bit more than you might, um, expect to see. And, um, and the reason for the increase though, there still is an increase, um, in chargebacks from 24 to 25 is primarily due to additional allocations for finance services and purchasing grants, cash management to the utility funds, as well as expanded finance services charges to the Port Authority and the HRA. So over the past, like recent years, um, just with new, uh, management and some restructuring and a lot of activity going on in the port and the HRA, the Finance Department has taken on a much more active role in managing, uh, port and HRA budgets and grant management and purchasing and accounts payable and debt management and in cash management. So, um, I just wanted to take some time to kind of explain why that one looks so good, like for, for the 25 budget request compared to 24. And then here's that more detailed, um, breakdown between 24 and 25. So I'll just highlight a few things on here. That in, increase in salaries and benefits reflect adjustments for, um, existing, existing staff positions. I am going to talk a little bit about some future needs that we're seeing, but that is not currently in this budget request. The $60,000, we talked about this a little bit in other places, is, that is for, um, something that's not in our budget right now. And it would be an annual membership fee for joining, uh, a collaborative organization that's with Ramsey County, St. Paul, Minneapolis, and Hennepin County related to local small business assistant programs to assist with, uh, rollout of a city of Bloomington's small local business target market program. And so that cost of, if we were becoming, if we joined that collaborative and we're a voting member, that cost is $15,000 per quarter. So that $60,000 annually. However, um, we, Finance has been working with, um, legal and with the Office of Racial Equity Inclusion and Belonging, just on, on looking at rolling out this, a program like this and bringing this to council, um, for the city of Bloomington. But since, uh, we haven't, we've had a vacancy in that chief equity officer position, it's on hold right now. So most likely that entire amount of $60,000 would probably not be needed for 2025. As it was, you know, originally we were planning to start that earlier in 2025. Also, we had talked about before, when I was talking about the strategic priorities and looking at ways to bring the levy down, um, possibly having that in the strategic priorities fund as opposed to part of the operating budget for Finance for 2025. This next slide is the org chart for the Finance Department. So we have 27 employees across multiple business lines that include purchasing, risk management, debt management, budget, financial reporting, accounting, accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, grant coordination and compliance, local liquor lodging, admission tax collection and auditing, utility billing, investments and cash management. So as I mentioned, as far as future staffing requests, just, just looking ahead, we have a, um, two staffing requests that are not currently included in this 25 budget that we do see a need for in the future. One identified need is for another accounting position that, um, would be split, have split responsibilities between, uh, Finance and Parks and Recreation. So this role, we're estimating a salary and benefits, if it was for 2025, would be 127,500. So that's fully loaded. And that could help with, there is some, as you might imagine, some growing complexity within the Parks and Recreation with, um, budgets, grants, uh, the local sales tax-funded construction projects, and then the Community Health and Wellness Center with an entirely new building and enterprise and programs that are going with that. And then the second position is what I was just talking about, that, um, target market program. If, if the city of Bloomington were to roll that out, um, we would need a coordinator position within purchasing. That would be critical to the success of that program. And so that position and that fully loaded would be a little over $120,000 with salaries and benefits. And that person would be responsible for, um, implementing, managing the city's, uh, a new target market program and expanding opportunities for small local business to engage with the city. And their, um, key responsibilities would include outreach, uh, managing vendor relationships and facilitating city, citywide training internally in collaboration with our departments to ensure compliance with, that would require new purchasing protocols that would be required to make that work within the city. So moving on to Finance Department new initiatives, uh, we have several key projects, uh, for the remainder of this year and for 2025 that we're going to be working on. So three main projects for our work plan that are highlighted on this slide. We are officially kicking off that project with the Government Finance Officers Association that I spoke of earlier this year on Wednesday. So we're going to have the kickoff with the GFOA with staff on Wednesday. And it's going to be a, it's not just a GFOA doing all that. We are going to have city staff involved too, to bring that cost of that, uh, project down. But we're going to be doing a comprehensive financial analysis, analysis of our working capital levels in our funds to insur- ensure that those resources are optimized. And we'll bring all that information to council. Staff from the GFOA will be coming in virtually to, um, present that information with us when we have that done. So we anticipate that probably taking two to three months. So it won't really line up maybe with this budget cycle, but it's going to set us up really well for the next, uh, next for the next, next year's budget. And we are, we're continuously updating policies and doing training, but we'll be doing additional educational incentives, training opportunities, as we're updating policies and purchasing matrix and things like that, just to make sure with new staff and new leadership and people in new management positions, that they are aware and aligned with our updated policies and procedures and best practices. And then, of course, again, I'll talk about this Target Market Program. That is one of our initiatives that we'll be collaborating with the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, and with Legal to, and you'll be hearing more about that as we move forward with that. So how Finance can help with enhancing revenue is to maximize our opportunities for grants. And, you know, just getting the, a grant money doesn't make it happen, and there's a lot of times, a lot of strings attached and a lot of staff capacity that is necessary to, to roll those programs out that's funded by grants well, and make sure that everything is in compliance, because there's a lot of additional steps you have to take to spend those within the grant requirements. But for grants, we are supporting departments in securing, managing those grants and ensuring compliance. I know the compliance and reporting and effort required in doing the reporting, for example, the SAE for Grants is a lot, but that is going very well, because our Grant Coordinator Accountant does a really, really good job with that. And then this other one on the slide is newer, and it's those direct pay credits that you may have heard of for clean energy investments. And they offer an opportunity for tax exempt entities like ours to receive payments that are similar to tax credits. And those direct pay energy credits for local governments were part of the incentives under the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022. And so they allow tax exempt entities, because the City of Bloomington does not pay tax to the federal government, to directly receive those payments for clean energy investments. And so normally, only taxable entities could get those tax benefits, but now there's a way that like local cities can get them. And so we are in the process of trying our first one out. I will say it's been a little bit back and forth, because it's very new for the IRS as well, but it looks positive that we're going to get our first one back. The first one we had that we could, that we could file is for an electric vehicle purchase. And so we will have more of those coming up, and they can also be used for solar and other energy efficiency improvements. So where we can use those, we will use them. And it's nice to have this first one go through so we can figure out how it all works and make sure that we do it correctly. So finally, this slide is just examining some of the potential negative impacts of reductions in Finance Department services. So, for example, reducing accounting services could limit our monitoring capabilities, could increase the risk of mismanagement and fraud. Financial reporting delays could affect our credit ratings, and also reduce our transparency to the public. And reductions in utility billing services could lead to billing errors or, and diminished customer service. So that concludes my presentation for Finance. I welcome any feedback or questions you may have.
Well, thank you for that. Very comprehensive. And it's, I just have to say, I've had the opportunity to watch these over a number of the years, and so it's very succinct in getting there. Let me turn to the council to see if any of my colleagues have any questions. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. So as far as future staffing needs, when do you anticipate that we reach that critical level where we would need to add an extra accountant? Like what year?
So of course, it would be helpful right now, Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember whoa. But especially when the, the Community Health and Wellness Center is up and operating, and as we get into the, the construction payments and things that go along with that, I think we're gonna find, we're gonna be a bit crushed with the additional work in Finance and also in Parks and Recreation. So currently, the Parks and Recreation Department is one of the bigger departments, especially with park maintenance in there as well, and those complexities. A lot of the other larger departments, like police and Public Health that have a lot of grant activity, as you just saw, and Public Works do have accountants that are in those areas. I think sometimes there's assumption that Parks and Rec has an accountant as well, and currently, they do not. So I think once things really get going with the, these Bloomington local sales tax funded initiative, these big projects, and when that is operational, that we'll really see a need for that. And then the Target Market Program Coordinator, that really has to do with, if the council wants to move forward with rolling that out, and when, and the timing of when that happens.
Thank you. What I wanted to ask, I had already asked the city manager, but I'll, I'll bring it up anyways. With that Target Market Program Coordinator, is the 60,000 associated with that, you know, just I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Acting Mayor Lohman, and councilmembers. So the $60,000 is the cost for us to participate in the collaborative, as Ms. Carlson said. And most of that cost is going towards essentially a study that needs to be done for essentially the financial underpinning to validate the, the need for such a program, right? So we wouldn't be able to implement unless we have the data that comes out of that process.
And this is related to, because I know this is part of our overall plan, and I can't remember, because we've got so much in that plan.
Yeah, Ms. Acting Mayor Lohman, it's in, it's in the Council's Strategic Priorities Fund is where that 60,000 was identified. It is an initiative that's consistent with our BTT strategic plan, and I believe was a recommendation from our Racial Equity Strategic Planning Process as well. So as a small business program, what it's really doing is trying to identify minority, women-owned, or underrepresented businesses, to make sure that they have access to opportunities and, and programs to ensure that they have as much of an opportunity for economic success as others do.
Thanks for just reminding myself. We've got a lot of initiatives going on, and they're important. Are there any other questions that we have? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So this isn't necessarily just for Finance, but maybe for operations more broadly. And Jamie, maybe you've given us an update relatively recently, so maybe in the past year. But I'm curious if and how we're exploring the use of artificial intelligence to become more efficient in our operations. You know, I think that there's, as we sit up here, like we think about the investments that have to be made in the Fire Department, the Parks and Recreation System, like, and, but then we also hear more investments needed for operations. And it gets a little bit daunting as we think about the impact on the levy year over year. And so I guess I'm just curious, you know, how are we, big picture, looking at efficiencies? And I think, I mean, in my own organization, we're seeing ways that it's helping tremendously at increasing efficiencies. And so I'm curious how we're thinking about the use of AI in the city.
Acting Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Carter, I don't know if you noticed, I perked up when you asked that question, because I put this on the radar screen for a couple of our executive team members. Our Chief Information Officer, Amy Chaney, who is presenting tonight, and I think is probably better positioned to discuss this in more detail during her presentation, and our city attorney as well, to be looking at what it is that we need to do to position ourselves to make sure that, that we are doing exactly what you said, is trying to understand the role of AI and how we can incorporate it into our systems to increase efficiency and, and better leverage the tools that we have. If somebody's watching, isn't familiar with AI or artificial intelligence, not sure where they've been for a while, but the fact is that AI is not new. You know, Nobel Prize was just awarded to a couple of researchers who've been working on AI for 30 years, right? And so it, it is embedded in much of the tech that is available currently. It is the access to those tools and the sophistication now that is making its application more accessible for everyday businesses and organizations. So we do have an internal working group that is looking at AI. We, as a matter of fact, just had a, an event, is that about four weeks ago, right, Amy, where the, we brought staff together and essentially did a large group brainstorming session on, you know, opportunities and trying to identify questions and concerns. So we are, we are trying to pay attention to it. Last conference I was at, I did a very heavy AI track. One of the police conferences recently, I know that I, along with the, some of our department staff, were tracking the AI there as well. And a lot of the tools that we're looking at for future investment, AI is prominently featured in them. So to answer, that's a really long, but I perked up, right? Clearly excited about this, and mildly terrified, but mostly excited that there's a lot of opportunity there. It's very early in the process. I think it's probably too early for us to identify where we're gonna be able to drive efficiency in our budget process. And the thing that I want to assure you is based on what I heard at my most recent conferences, we are at least where most everybody else is, if not a little bit further by fact, that we've already got a staff group that's working on it. And a policy, that's correct. We did adopt an AI policy a couple of months.
All right, folks, we are at seven o'clock here, and if I do my math correctly, we do two items an hour, we'll be out of here by nine. So just keep that in mind as we're kind of looking. Are there any other questions about? Any other questions we have? All right. Thank you for your presentation. We're gonna move on to the Internal Services Team and the General Fund.
Good evening, Mr. or Acting Mayor and councilmembers. Elizabeth Tolsmann, Assistant City Manager for the Internal Services Team. And I'm gonna kick off our service team presentation here. And so the agenda will be, I'll kind of highlight the first five areas here. Then our HR Manager, Steve Barrett, will talk about employee benefits. Our Chief Information Officer will talk about information technology. And Jeanne Hill Communications will discuss communications because of their unique funding streams. Just to go back here, I want to show the org chart, our new org chart, given our restructure here. Sorry. Let's touch it here. So just to showcase with the new reorg that we did earlier this year, I oversee these six primary areas. In addition to those primary areas, there will also be an area of strategy, innovation, and performance. I'll oversee our Management Fellow, Caitlin Danielsack, who's helping us with a lot of policy work. And our office also includes the two Assistant City Managers, our Executive Assistant for the City Manager, and obviously, our Council Secretary as well. So I think the best way to describe our area is we really focus on systems, policies, processes, and procedures for transformational change that have internal impact, but also enterprise-wide impact, but also impacts the community as well. So I added the extra word enterprise with next to internal services, because we're not only internal facing, we actually have a lot of impact externally as well. So I'm gonna highlight just a few key areas from each of these areas, and the entire team is here, either in person or virtually. So I really appreciate the team being here, and they can answer any questions as well. But just for efficiency and flow, we're gonna just start with the City Manager and City Council Budget. So this number looks big when you first look at this, but there's some explanation that's gonna happen here. This budget includes shifts from both the Community Services Administration and Public Works Administration's budget with the restructure that I alluded to. So the impact of that is increase in salaries and benefits. And there's also some revenue that had previously been in the Community Services Admin Budget that's now in the City Manager's budget. I do want to note that earlier this year, we are looking at City Council salaries. We, our City Clerk, our previous City Clerk, did some research on that for populations between 50 and 100,000 populations. However, any changes would require an amendment to the ordinance, but, and per state law, the change would be in effect January 1st of 2026. So I just want to highlight that we're looking at it. But if, if there are any changes, it wouldn't happen until January 1st, 2026. Just gonna dig a little bit deeper to give you a little bit more detail. This slides provide that. So as mentioned, large increases in salaries and benefits. And it includes one new Assistant City Manager and a strategy and innovation position that we have not posted yet. These costs are offset by the elimination of the Community Services Administration budget, and also decreases in the Public Works Administration budgets as well. So while it looks high here, you gotta keep in mind, it's shifting from the previous Community Services Department, that's no longer here, that also shifts in the Public Works Administration budget as well. Other charges are just nominal things through membership, professional services, training, and so forth as well. Then, I would note, because it looks like there's two new Assistant City Managers, but just sometimes people forget, but my position replaces Mike Sable, the previous Assistant City Manager that had already been existence even before this started. So just wanted to clear that perception as well. The, our area really focuses on what I call three areas: Strategic Alignment, Performance and Accountability, and Organizational Culture. We're really looking at building a stronger internal services team. In this presentation, we'll examples of how we're collaborating as a service team. We're gonna invest in training for performance and accountability. I'm a strong believer in results-based accountability, data analysis and evaluation, promoting our work on both a local and a national level, which Bloomington is really known for. Our area also sees our state and federal legislative priorities. We've already started establishing what we call Legislative Action Teams of city staff across the city. And we'll be coming before you in the next few weeks on a study session, but really excited about some great work we're doing at both the state and federal level. We're also keeping revenue in mind. Ms. Carlson alluded to this, but working very closely with Finance to look at grants, revenue opportunities to support our city goals. And another thing we're really honing in on is the city's mission of equity, sustainability, and well-being. And so we're working on forms and processes that, you'll see that coming more before you through council request as well. The next area I'm gonna highlight is Human Resources. And not too much to show here, because there's not really nominal impact in their budget, maintaining staff, just normal increases in salaries and benefits. There's actually a decrease in professional services. I do want to highlight that we are working on a comp study for our organization. And so we're, that's going underway right now. We'll, we'll look at kind of market studies of our grades, classifications, where we sit, how competitive we are, and just looking at the titles and grades of our areas across the city as well. The main focus areas in the Human Resources is really focused on employee success, having a human-centric approach in service delivery, and really enhancing our trainings, especially for supervisors and managers. So just really working hard at a positive work culture, organizational development, definitely looking at revenue resources, but just how our Human Resources staff can be out and about and serving our departments and divisions in a much more effective and efficient way. I'll move on to the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And we have Arian and Isella back here. And so again, their number kind of jumps out, but the biggest change here is this office has went from a one full-time person team, from, I believe, seven, six years ago, to a two-person team, and now a three-person team. And that's really needed for the work that they're doing across the city. So that's the significant change in the increase there. And I would note that, because Ms. Carlson alluded to it, the Chief Equity Inclusion Officer is actually posted right now. So the deadline or the posting end date is on October 31st. So really excited to backfill Ms. Jackson's previous row, but that is open right now. And then just nominal increases in the other areas as well. The areas that we're focusing on here is really being an inclusive workplace, the supplier diversity and the Target Market Program that was alluded to by Finance, and really advancing equity inclusion across the city. Supplier diversity is huge, working with procurement and contracting. We're looking at a disparity study within the city as well, partnering with Legal in that, and really ensuring how to do business in Bloomington, and how we can make it more effective and efficient, and just reduce the barriers of doing business from an entrepreneur level to construction, to professional services, and so forth. Really, the whole theme of the Office of Racial Equity is really focusing on deconstructing and reconstructing systems, policies, practice, and culture to advance racial equity, inclusion, and belonging in the city and in our community. Next, I'll go to the City Clerk's Office. And just to remind you, the City Clerk covers three primary areas in the city: elections, or business licensing. covers three primary areas in the city, elections, our business licensings and our cemetery. And our city clerk, Jamie Hansen, I believe is online right now. Um, but we're underway and been very busy with elections. Uh, we had 793 people on Friday alone, um, to show up for direct balloting. So, um, we've been watching the numbers and the trends and we're trending higher than we did during the 2020 election. So, um, really ensuring that we're effective and efficient is really important. So with the loss of Christina Scipione, uh, previous city clerk, we did a little bit restructuring in the city clerk's office, which is why you'll see some savings and reductions in this area or being budget neutral. Um, we uplifted, um, one of our deputies as a city clerk, um, and kind of uplifted a few folks to really absorb the work across the area, um, to be more effective and efficient and not add another FDE. And so that's been going really well so far. Um, so really happy about the change that we've done in that slide or in that area. Oops, sorry. If you want to see the numbers. Um, so that's where you see the negative numbers there, just to kind of show, um, the restructuring that we did in that area. Um, I do want to note here too, that we did, um, move two full-time records management positions into IT and our chief equity, or I'm sorry, our chief information officer, we'll talk more about that. So at one time, data management and privacy was at our city clerk's office. We thought that was more fitting in IT. Um, and so those two positions were moved over there. So that reflects that reductions as well. And really the focus on the city clerk's area is really effective, efficient and transparent election processes, our business licensings and our cemetery services, really work at digitizing our cemetery records to be more modernized, cross-training our staff in each of these areas so they can support one another, um, with the new Real ID, um, that's going to come up, extending our passport operations and expanding our passport services due to increased demand and, um, also hopefully revenue, standardizing procedures, um, and obviously a big area focusing on voter outreach and enhancing public access to cemetery services as well. Um, a great quick story is co-ed, um, and our city clerk's office really partnered up to do voter outreach, especially in apartments, um, and areas in the city where we saw lower outreach. And so we saw some significant, um, engagement in that space. And then we have, uh, co-ed, which is community outreach and engagement. And I know Eric is online as well. And you'll also see, um, a reduction in their figures here. But the story behind that is that, um, we actually moved, um, a lot of our previous social services contracts into legal and, uh, public health. So at one time they were all managed and led by co-ed and it made sense, um, that our work around domestic violence would go to legal. Um, and then our work with some direct social services would go to public health. Um, so that reflects the changes in there. Um, then, um, there was also some internal charges, um, that were not previously, um, uh, included in the co-ed bu- budget. So that's where there's a little bit of figures that moved in that space are kind of the highlighted areas. And co-ed has spent this past year really working hard on their strategic plan. And, um, there are three kind of highlighted pillars in their work is really around building relationships to build trust in the community, civic engagement. So think of boards, commissions, advisor groups, Bloomington Learn to Lead, um, just how to get people connected and engage in the city, um, and inclusive decision-making. So ensuring that our staff, departments and divisions are ensuring that community is part of the decision-making process. Um, here are some examples of the work that they're doing, um, a- across the area there, um, that I mentioned. They're also working very closely with ORE, Communications, our internal services team to ensure this kind of one-stop shop, um, again, getting back to ensuring that our policies have an equity lens, um, that we've engaged community and that we've communicated well. Um, co-ed also, um, just drives a lot of community donations. Um, examples of that is the Veterans Appreciation Event that we do in our Early Childhood Expo. So bringing in donations into the city as well. Uh, then they play a huge role in our strategic plan and our Bloomington Together Tomorrow work as well. I think that's the last area. And I just really want to highlight just in the five months that I've been here, um, just examples of what we're doing internally with, um, external impact. Uh, we're looking at the agenda review process to ensure that our city council meetings are effective and efficient. That's actually going to be our primary topic at exec team tomorrow. Um, so ensuring that you guys have the information, um, we're vetting things out in advance. Um, if you notice our PowerPoint templates are standardized, um, we're having a limit on our number of PowerPoints. Um, so just doing some new transformational process to make things effective and efficient without sacrificing the information that you're receiving. Um, our Bloomington Veterans Memorial, which you guys, um, or which you all, um, approved early this year, that's a huge collaboration between IT, our city clerk's office, communications, public works and also community development. Um, our strategic plan, um, has some cross, um, divisional areas as well. Um, we're looking at how we do events in the community. So as you know, with creative place making, co-ed and ORE, we do lots of events where we partner, lead, support, and we're taking a look at that, how to make the special event permitting more effective and efficient. Um, and you know, maybe even saying where we might need to either partner, collaborate, or maybe not take a lead on because it takes a lot of work to do. Um, internally, ORE, Human Resources and, and Legal, we're looking at our employment rules, which hasn't been updated for quite some time. We're modernizing that and making sure it has an equity lens and looking at our hiring process. Um, we're going to start developing workforce statistics, um, to ensure that we're attracting and retaining talent. Uh, ORE even HR is partnering in that. Um, I mentioned the how to do business with ORE, finance and legal, um, through our supplier diversity and target market program. Uh, then last but not least, um, organizational culture is a huge priority, um, for this office through city leadership, administration, communications, ORE and HR are key players in that. So with that, take any questions that you may have?
Well, thank you. Wow, that was, uh, quite a bit. Um, and, uh, a lot, lots being, being worked on. Um, uh, before we get started, I wanted to just, uh, uh, turn, you know, to the city man- management, uh, group here. And I know there's been, um, a number of changes, uh, at the state capitol with regard to lifting the, the cap, um, off of, uh, of, uh, for, uh, employees, uh, at, at the city. And, um, you know, it's when sometimes when folks, uh, look at our city, um, when we, we made the, the restructuring, um, we, you know, we have what an assistant city manager and then a couple of other positions and there, there may be some confusion, uh, with respect, uh, from that perspective. And I wanted you to, you know, speak to that if you could and talk about that a little bit.
Sure. Acting Mayor Lohman, council members, thank you. Uh, so two things, uh, in that question. The first was, uh, the 2023, the Minnesota Legislature did really, uh, did eliminate what, what was called the, um, uh, local government salary cap, uh, which had a limitation on, uh, compensation that was indexed to the governor's salary. Um, and, uh, council was aware of that last year. Uh, I want to say that didn't affect like the floodgates opening in terms of compensation because there's still a whole process that we go through, uh, to look at where we are positioned both internally and externally, uh, when determining compensation. As a matter of fact, council's aware that, uh, right now we're in the midst of a compensation study that's actually kicking off in two weeks, uh, where, uh, consultant will be meeting with our staff. Uh, and that's not a guarantee that the, that compensation is going to go up as a result of the action by the legislature. It's just, uh, coincident, uh, to that happening. Um, the reorganization itself, as the council's aware, uh, uh, was accomplished within existing budget and within existing headcount. So the, as, um, Ms. Tolsmann, uh, indicated, uh, the, uh, two positions that were eliminated were director positions, the two positions that were added, one was an assistant city manager and the strategic innovation coordinator. And the, uh, uh, employee costs related to the two new positions will actually be less than the cost of the two previous positions. So, uh, we did that within budget and within the existing headcount.
Yeah, thanks for that. Thank you for that, that clarification, um, on that. I just think that's important as we get ready to, to look at this, that we kind of have context for that. I certainly have some more questions too, but I'll look to my colleagues and see if they have any questions, um, uh, on this particular area. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Uh, so at first I just have to say that I very much appreciate, um, the things that you have done to increase efficiencies and effectiveness. I feel like you said that multiple times and I was like, yes, this is great. Um, I do have one question related to the structure of the community outreach and engagement budget. And this could also probably go for ORE, but I noticed that we do, um, you know, uh, we do the internal charges of the chargebacks to other departments that use like finance and legal and I'm curious why we don't do the same for an office like co-ed or for maybe even ORE, um, who are working directly with departments to improve their services and operations.
So, um, Acting Mayor, um, council members, Councilmember Carter, we do charge back, actually. So let me just go back to those slides. So, so one thing that, um, was new in the community outreach and engagement budget is that we were not. Um, but in the 25 budget, we will be. So in the 25 budget, we have, um, expenses charged to other funds at 246,858. So there's their chargebacks. And this is the first year where they're going to have those chargebacks. And that's why their budget impact in the general fund is actually better by $304,000 for both the social service contracts going to other areas and them charging back to those non-general fund funds. And then, um, ORE also has a chargeback as well. I can just find that quick. A lot of things changed around with chargebacks, um, this year because, um, as Ms. Tolsmann was saying, with the city clerk and with the two, um, data governance employees going to IT, their chargebacks went down in city clerk. Um, so there's all, like, we looked at chargebacks very carefully and how we're allocating them and just making sure that it made sense. So you, there was some movement around, but that bottom line there, um, less expenses charged to other funds and the ORE budget there is there as well.
Okay. Thank you. I think I was looking at it, um, in my mind, they had been kind of more of a part of the revenue section and others. And so I don't know if that was how we used to, I have no idea. But so it's good to know, we need to be looking at the less expenses charged to other funds. That's where the chargebacks are across the budgets.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out. I will just say, in the general fund, that is how we accomplish that. And then when we look at internal service fund budgets, which we'll be looking at, the employee benefits fund is an internal service fund budget, so is the IT fund. Then you're going to see, because it's a different type of fund, has different accounting rules, you'll see the revenues coming in as a revenue. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the dist- distinguishing between the two.
Well, thank you for that. I, you know, had the same thought that you did, Councilmember Carter. I didn't realize that, you know, I, I was wondering if we're going to do chargebacks on that, uh, manager.
Thank you, Acting, Acting Mayor Lohman. I'd like to just add a comment too, um, because we've mentioned a couple of times the social, the, the social service contracts moving from co-ed, uh, into other places, legal and, and public health. Um, and so I just want to explain that the social service contracts being in co-ed is a little bit of like a vestal limb of the previous organization. And back in 2018, uh, we did an assessment of what was then called our human services division within the community services department. And the human services division had been administering those contracts. Uh, and when co-ed, um, was created in that reorganization, we left the contracts with co-ed, even though that wasn't necessarily core to the work that they were doing. And so we made the decision this year to start transitioning those contracts to where they're, uh, more appropriately placed in terms of who administers them and the service that's being provided.
Councilmember Loh? Uh, thank you, Acting Mayor. Um, more of a comment than anything. Um, I want to echo what Councilmember Carter, um, said about the efficiencies. Over the last four or five years, Bloomington has actively gone out into the country and the world to say Bloomington is a fantastic place and it worked. People are coming here to start their corporate headquarters here. People are living here. We've seen increases in our population for the first time in decades. And so, um, not that the city manager wasn't doing this before, uh, but something I've wanted to do and make sure that we do is support our employees to allow our staff, which is fantastic, to come up with ways to improve efficiencies. And we're seeing it right now work out. And so, um, just want to give, give you kudos, um, to, to our staff, to, to say that we do appreciate the work that they do and their ideas are valid. And we appreciate those ideas because it allows us to be more efficient in delivering service that the residents of Bloomington need. Um, so I'm very happy to see a lot of the efficiencies going. Um, want to see more, um, there because we definitely have room for more. Uh, but I think with the support and the structure that we have now, it's going to allow our employees and our staff to really do their work efficiently and, uh, deliver what Bloomington needs. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, other questions? Well, then I've got a few. Uh, I noticed in the finance, uh, slides, uh, that if there was a, a, a budget reduction, uh, in that, that particular service, these are some of the things that we would miss, you know, as a, as a, as a city, uh, and also as a council and that type of thing. And I noticed that, that wasn't necessarily in each of these. Um, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but, uh, that would be something I, you know, uh, would be very interested in, uh, learning about. So I think some of these, uh, some of these, uh, programs, uh, because they are hidden, um, sometimes you just, you kind of miss, uh, some of that in terms of what they do and how they contribute, uh, to the overall, uh, uh, in terms of what we're trying to do, um, uh, as a, um, as a city. Uh, so for example, we look at the BTT, um, you know, for, some of those things weren't able to move forward, what impact would that have on our overall, um, you know, image as a city and that type of thing. And I'm not going to freestyle up here, so I'll, I'll stop there. Um, uh, there was one other question that I had, um, in terms of, unless there was a comment, I'm sorry, on that one. Okay. Uh, when it, when we look at, uh, the Office of, um, of, uh, uh, racial equity, uh, including and belonging, uh, I'm not even sure if I can pronounce that right, or, or, or?
ORE.
ORE, okay, ORE. Um, you know, we've, you know, it looks like we're looking at having an increase there of, of staff there. And so one question that I, I kind of have is, um, and I've always had the curiosity in terms of, as we, you know, we look at the, just the pure, um, work product that's there and that work plan that's there, um, do we have the right staffing to, to try to accomplish and get done, even when we add this additional, uh, staff person to try to, try to get these things done? You know, I look, uh, and the reason why I ask the question is, uh, you know, we have at the very end of this, um, uh, you know, just some statistics in terms of looking across, um, and trying to partner with, uh, human resources. And then there's a couple, you know, I, I heard the legal department earlier, just seems, uh, uh, like that department would be very stretched, very thin, uh, to try to accomplish and get some of those things. And so I'm, I'm just curious, if you look at the, you know, again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if I look at, uh, like, um, uh, our engagement organization, I'm thinking about how many people we have there in the scope and the, that happens there. And I try to do that comparison with what, what Orb is doing. And I'm just trying to have a better understanding of, of how that works and operates. Is there a, uh, you know, is there a staffing issue there, um, that I'm, because I'm just kind of, as I look at that, I'm like, wow, they, they got to get a lot done. And what's the quality at work?
Acting Mayor and City Council Members, that's an excellent question. I think this is the beauty of the service team structure and how we're doing this is, you know, in the past, you know, you have small departments that are kind of fighting for resources and, and, uh, limits of flexibility in the work that we're doing. Um, by putting these areas under one service team, internal services, you know, between ORE, co-ed, communications, throwing HR, even the other areas, we're able to work towards shared goals and alignment in the work that we do. Uh, we back each other up, we support one another. If there's an event, it's no longer, it's an ORE event, a co-ed event, or you, you know what I mean? It's like, no, we're working together. So that is the only area in this entire service team where we've added additional staff. And we just did peer research on this, uh, comparing peer cities of where people are investing in race equity. And other than the city of Minneapolis and city of St. Paul, um, you know, we are the only suburban city that's investing in not only staff and resources in, uh, racial equity, inclusion and belonging. So to ask, to answer your question directly, we are constantly looking at resources, but right now we're working towards a collaborative culture. Um, the thing about service structure is can we shift and move things in the future? That's a possibility. We haven't gone there yet, but, um, at this point in time, we're not going to, you know, shift or add people because we really operate as one service team and shared outcomes and goals in the work that we're doing.
Manager?
Thank you, Acting Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, the one thing I do want to note too, just to, um, provide a little more clarity is in, in the slide where it's changes from the 2024 budget and includes addition of one full-time position, that's not a new staff position that we'd be going out and filling. Um, it's new in the budget. Um, this year it was in the strategic priorities fund. And it's one of those examples where we start doing work and the council authorizes it through our strategic fund. And then we, uh, transition it into our, uh, general fund budget. Uh, so that's, that's how we accomplish that over a couple of years, just to ease the impact of bringing that person on. So there's, there's currently three staff, uh, within the ORE. So it's not going out and getting a new staff. We have three currently.
Well, thank you for, for that, that clarification on that. And then, um, just one other request that I kind of have. I know since we've kind of done this reorganization, uh, of, of the areas, one thing I, I am interested in, again, not for today, but as we have that internal and the uh, of, uh, the areas, one thing I, I am interested in, again, not for today, but as we have that internal and the external. I, I am also always curious in terms of how we compare, um, uh, to other, other cities, other counties that kind of have that structure in terms of how, how efficient. I know we're just kind of moving into that. Uh, um, so I'm not necessarily looking for anything again, even next year. But as, as we continue to kind of move down this in terms of efficiency, um, I'd be curious to see, you know, how do we compare? Um, and how efficient are we with what we're doing in terms of our service delivery with that particular model and what the, uh, how this looks different than, than what we've done in the past, um, any of those highlights, um, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, Acting Mayor Lohman and, and councilmembers. Uh, w- one of the indicators of, uh, the success that we're having is Ms. Tolzman indicated. Uh, there, the Center for Economic Inclusion, um, uh, did a, uh, race equity, uh, assessment. Uh, and Bloomington came out on top in that, uh, and that was, that was done for the first time last year. Uh, and that's looking at the, the resources that are allocated, the, um, systems work that is being done. How we're incorporating it into the organization and community work we're doing. And, um, by the measures that they had identified, Bloomington, uh, was ahead of all of our other peer communities.
I appreciate that. And I think we need to continue to, to tell that story and continue to work, uh, uh, towards that. So uh, I'll, I'll stop. Any other questions that the council may have? Well, thank you much.
Thank you.
I think the next one we have here is the employee, uh, benefits.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Steve Barrett. I'm the Human Resources Manager with the city. And, uh, I've been here nine months. This is my first budget presentation to you. So wish me luck. Kari is here with me. Don't wander off too far.
I'll stay right here.
Yeah. Um, what we're going to talk about tonight, it looks, as all these presentations have gone, um, a number of things I'm going to walk through. It looks like a lot. It is a lot, but I'm, I'm going to be as succinct as possible, um, to allow as much time for discussion and questions as we can. Uh, what I'm going to walk through tonight is, uh, an overview of the employee benefits fund. How it's funded, what it looks like, things like that. We'll talk about the twenty-twenty-five budget request versus twenty-twenty-four, that comparison. Um, we're going to talk about the Employee Benefits Committee, uh, because that's the, the main component, the main driver of this employee benefits fund is health insurance and the cost of premiums and things like that. Um, the benefits fund helps put concepts into reality on a spreadsheet. So I'm going to walk through the benefits committee, what we do. Look at how other cities are funding their health insurance benefits. What kinds of investments are other cities doing? How do we compare to those other cities? We'll talk about that. And then we'll talk about a, a different model to fund our insurance contributions. Uh, we want to make it more financially sustainable while still maintaining the investment in our employees that has made us an employer of choice in local government. And then we'll talk about some budget savings related to that. So first, a, a general overview of the fund. We're, this fund is created by, uh, a fee that we charge to each department based on the number of full-time employees they have. And that fee is used to fund, uh, primarily our group benefits, health insurance, dental, life insurance, um, disability coverage. But we also include, uh, tuition reimbursement and health club reimbursement. So as insurance, health insurance premiums increase, and we do have an increase in twenty-twenty-five, I'll talk about that in just a second. Uh, as those premiums increase, it creates pressure on all of our departments as, as we assess that this fee to pay for these group benefits. Now, in terms of premium increases, uh, there was a recent story in the Minnesota Star Tribune. Um, this was from late September. Uh, the running average for health insurance premium increases related to rising costs in health insurance is around nine to fifteen percent premium increases. Now, our premium increase for twenty-twenty-five came in at seven point eight percent. So below that average, a little bit below that average. Uh, and the premium increases are primarily correlate to our claims history. If our claims are high, we can expect our premium increases to, to match that. Uh, there's a lot that goes into their formula, uh, but it's primarily raised, uh, related to our claims history. Uh, so our premium increase for twenty-twenty-five is a little below the state average. A number of cities for twenty-twenty-five are getting hit with sizable premium increases for next year. Um, one city, it came in at thirty percent. They were able to negotiate that down to a mere twenty-five percent, but it's high. And it, a couple of other cities are dealing with eighteen to twenty percent premium increases. So we're coming in at seven point eight percent, uh, which is below the state average, thankfully. Now, in terms of what the fund looks like, wouldn't be a budget conversation without a, a Kari spreadsheet here. Um, the key changes, and, and I'll have the table here, uh, shortly, uh, the biggest thing is the increase in the health insurance premium for next year. Um, this relates also to increases in internal revenue from the departments and employee withholdings. So we're looking at a net change of just under seven hundred thousand dollars, six hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight. Uh, the next slide shows the breakdown of the more detailed list. Again, showing many of the same numbers on the spreadsheet, uh, but the biggest driver there is the increase in the health insurance premium. Uh, and this is with a fairly modest seven point eight percent increase. Now, as we, as we talk further, um, with our contribution structure and the plan designs we have, uh, we think we can, uh, keep our increases in future premiums more modest than what some of our neighbors are experiencing. And I'll explain that in just a sec. So in terms of projecting, um, this slide, this spreadsheet, looking back a few years, but also projecting ahead to twenty-twenty-nine. And, uh, we had some strong years in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. And, uh, that increased the working capital balance in this fund above what our targets were. So in this current year and then the next two years after that, um, we're planning to strategically use a portion of that to, uh, mitigate the impact of budget increases for the departments as we assess that fee to them to pay for these benefits. So as you can see, uh, projecting ahead, uh, we're looking at a, a, a s- uh, sustained, consistent general fund balance there. Now, to put these concepts in, into a spreadsheet, um, we have to have some discussion and feedback and all kinds of things. I want to talk about a benefits committee for just a moment. Um, the benefits committee is a collaborative effort, uh, with human resources and especially our, our benefits and wellness coordinator, uh, as well as representatives from all our employee groups. Uh, and our broker and consultants, which is NFP. NFP provides data guidance. Um, they work with our providers when it comes time to renewals, to negotiate the best rates we can get. Um, they've been tremendous to work with and they're, they're a very good resource for this group. Uh, this is an advisory group, so they don't, they're not a decision-making body. But through discussion, analysis, feedback, the group provides recommendations to the city manager and city leaders on what we should do going forward. So how do we compare in terms of, you know, we're not on an island in Bloomington. We're surrounded by other cities. Uh, how does our investment in health insurance coverage compare to other cities around us? So what we did is we're looking at every city in Minnesota with a population of fifty thousand or more. And there's eighteen of us, more than I thought there would be. Uh, but there's eighteen ranging from Edina all the way up to the city of Minneapolis. And including Bloomington. And, and the difficulty in comparing, especially comparing health insurance is every employer has different plan designs and, and different copays, different out-of-pocket maximums. Um, all these elements are different because they tailor their health plans to their own employees. So comparing health plans among these eighteen cities is very difficult. So we decided to look at it through, uh, pick it up and look at it at a different angle. And, and, and look at it in terms of how do these cities invest in their health insurance benefits for their employees? How much do they invest? How do we compare in terms of that investment? What we found was interesting. In Bloomington, and this is a snapshot of twenty-twenty-four, our current year, uh, for single coverage, the city pays between ninety-three to a hundred percent of the single premium. Uh, that depends on which type of plan you enroll in. For our managed care plan, we invest a hundred percent of the premium. So the employee pays nothing out of their pocket. To our, uh, open network plan, which is, uh, as, as it says, an open network, we can see any doctor. Uh, there we contribute ninety-three percent. For family, we're contributing ninety-two to ninety-eight percent of the premium, depending on which plan you enroll in. We, we invest more for those employees in the, in the managed care plans, which, uh, the premiums are, are lower, uh, things like that. The networks are smaller. With these other cities, these other eighteen cities, um, we looked at, what are, what are they paying for a single and family? And for single, uh, we're in the ballpark. The, the others, these other cities average, uh, around ninety-five percent of the monthly premium. For family, these other cities are averaging about seventy-two percent of the monthly premium. So, uh, w- we are quite favorable in the investments we're making to our employees for health coverage. And that is, that's a big deal. As a human resources person, uh, as an employee with a family, it's a big deal. And it's a big selling point to attract and retain employees to the city of Bloomington to make us an employee, employer of choice. Now, that's all great, but as premiums keep going up, we cannot sustain this current benefit contribution model. Uh, it'll become unaffordable at some point. And so we need to find a contribution structure that is financially sustainable, but also highlights and maintains our investment in employees. And I think we were able to find something, uh, that's going to work. Uh, through collaboration with administration, finance and human resources. Um, we need to find the right balance and, and we balance things all the time with budgets. It's financial sustainability and maintaining, uh, a good, strong investment in our employees. Uh, to keep us better than some of our neighbors to attract employees. Would, I will say anecdotally, uh, when we hire new employees, uh, and we show them our benefit structure and the contributions and, uh, you know, you can get single health insurance here with no out-of-pocket cost at all. And family coverage, very affordable rates. And we've more than once been told that this has to be a typo. This, this can't be true. No, it is true. Uh, because of the plan designs we have and the history we have, uh, of making these investments. And so this new contribution structure is designed to do really three things. The first two I've already talked about. Having something that's financially sustainable, uh, maintaining a strong investment in our employees. The third thing is maintaining the balance within our health plans. We have the managed care plan. We have something in the middle. It's a managed care plan with a bigger network. And then we have an open access plan. Having a large percentage of our employees in these managed care plans will keep our claims lower. And by keeping our claims lower, we should keep our premium increases lower. So we don't, we want to maintain a structure where employees are still getting a good value with these managed care plans. And we think this structure will do that. What we look to do is for our, the managed care plan, the standard managed care plan we have, we'd contribute ninety-nine percent of the single premium. So it goes from a hundred to ninety-nine percent. That equates to about six dollars a month increase. So three dollars a paycheck. And ninety-seven percent for family. Uh, for that middle plan, it's a managed care plan with a bigger network. Ninety-seven percent for single, ninety-five percent of the family. And then for the open access plan, ninety-one percent for single and family. Now, this approach keeps a couple of our single plans very affordable, which is, which is a strong interest of our employees. And, uh, it maintains the balance of, of, we can maintain three health plans to provide the most options to our employees, which is something that employees really want. Uh, just a snapshot of earlier this fall, fifty-nine percent of our employees are enrolled in one of the two managed care plans. Forty-one percent in the open access plan. And we want to keep a sizable percentage in that manage, in those managed care plans. Um, as I said, to keep our claims a little lower, which will benefit us when it comes to renewals each year. So what does this mean for budget impact? Uh, this new methodology will, will create some savings. If you go on to the next one, please. Uh, under our old, our, our old structure, our current contribution structure, looking ahead too far. Uh, our current contribution structure, if we maintain that philosophy of hundred percent single sizable contributions for family, um, it would cost around eight hundred and seven thousand dollars increase next year compared to this year. By going to this new contribution structure, which satisfies the two main interests I've talked about. Sustainability, but investment, maintaining a good investment for our employees. That'll come in about six hundred and eighty-five thousand or just under seven hundred thousand, uh, savings of around a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars compared to our current contribution structure. Uh, that potential savings. I say savings, it's, we're spending more money, but it's not as much as we would have spent. So it's uh, but those savings could increase. If more employees were to gravitate to those managed care plans, our savings would increase even more. But right now, uh, based on our current enrollment, it would save us about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. With that, uh, I open it up for questions and discussion.
Well, I'm going to pass it back to our, uh, mayor here. He does a fine job and I like to focus on asking questions as a council member if I can.
Thank you, councilmember, and thank you for pitching for me. Uh, apologies for being late. I got tied up at work and couldn't make my way in, so I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Thanks for being here. Uh, the question I had, if my math was correct, is it ninety-two or ninety-three percent of our employees actually participate in one of the two healthcare offerings?
Yes.
Through the city?
It's, it varies at any given time. It's the low nineties.
Low nineties. And I mean, that's assuming that many of them have spouses working elsewhere, but they choose either an individual or a family plan here through the city of Bloomington.
Yes.
And I'm, do you have any idea, and, and I, if you don't, I understand. What is the typical rate for an, uh, of an organization of five hundred people? What would it typically be in terms of that participation rate for employees?
It depends, you know, some, some organizations allow you to waive coverage, others do not.
Mm-hmm.
Um, ninety-something percent is pretty high in comparing to organizations our size. But it depends, each organization has their own rules, so it's, it's hard to make concrete judgments with that.
Understood. Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Lohman and then Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Moa. That's a different perspective.
Look, if you've ever been down there, that's kind of strange to see down there.
Where I started.
So, I suppose, yeah.
That's true. Um, so I guess my question, Mayor, um, which is kind of weird to look at this way. Um, uh, you know, as we, as we look at these, uh, costs in terms of them, uh, increasing year over year. Um, it doesn't seem that there's a, you know, we go from eight hundred down to seven hundred, you know, that doesn't seem like a whole lot of, a lot of savings. Um, and then I guess my, my follow-up question to that is, you know, have, have any of these other cities looked at trying to
have have any of these other cities looked at trying to? I know when I was a part of a consortium, we tried to, you know, work together to try to bring down. Have other cities decided to ever combine and work together to try to? I know you lose some of your, your control with that, but uh, is there any advantage in terms of doing that? Where we were able to maybe work with, you know, Edina and Richfield or something like that, say?
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, members of the council, uh, we are in a consortium as we speak. Bloomington is the largest uh, city in the consortium by a wide margin. So um, our claims history, um, good and bad, tends to carry the day for the entire consortium. It's a different, different prospect if we were to to look at forming partnerships with other similar cities as us. And that's certainly something we can do on the horizon. But it, we, we are in a consortium right now, but we're so much bigger than everybody else in our group that our claims history tends to move the needle the most.
Councilmember Carter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think I know the answer to this question, but um, I want to ask it just in case. Are the health benefits that you're talking about, do they apply for union and non-union? Are they all the same, or do we have health benefits written into contracts with unions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, uh, it's for all employees.
Okay.
Our union contracts have language about what we're gonna contribute. Up till now, it's always been whatever the insurance benefits committee in the city come up with, we'll just follow along. We have insurance reopeners for two thousand and twenty-five with all of our unions who are trying to negotiate with them. We have to negotiate it. But this, this benefit package applies for all of our employees, union and non-represented.
Okay, thank you. I also just want to say that I appreciate all the work that you've done to try to address this issue. I know it's, it's almost an impossible situation that many employers are dealing with right now. And so, um, again, thank you for um, getting us to this point, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. Question about just exploring deeper contribution cuts? Did we, did we go through that process? What did it look like? Because just from my quick view, it looks like there's, there's room for that to still be competitive. And so just walk through the process.
Yes, uh, we look at a number of scenarios with the benefits committee, looking at the data, looking at potential um, city contribution structures. With, if we were to go forward with a recommendation for reductions, let's say for family coverage, because we have a number of employees represented by unions, uh, and they have reopeners in their contracts for insurance, we would have to negotiate that with all the unions, um, which is not impossible. But that's, that's an added factor. But we, we look at many different scenarios, including increases, reductions. But trying to balance these two main items that I've talked about of financial sustainability, but also maintaining a good, healthy investment for our employees.
And then second question, just kind of that, that sustainability piece of it. Do we have a regular process to reassess our contribution to health and health insurance benefits moving forward? Or is this kind of just like as it comes up, we're looking at it? Because I would like to see like more regular schedule to, to see how we compare so that we can be sustainable in the future.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mua, um, we're always gonna be comparing with these cities of fifty thousand and above. Part of the uh, part of the thinking around this new contribution structure is by having these percentages and not disrupting the balance of enrollment that we have in our various plans, that we think we won't need to revisit that too often. That, but if we do, uh, if we do get the twenty or thirty percent premium increase, what is that gonna mean? With this new contribution structure, what would that mean? With the old contribution structure, what would that mean? So we're always gonna be exploring, anytime we get a premium increase, we're gonna explore those things.
Other questions? Mr. Barrett, I appreciate it. And again, I apologize for coming in the middle of your presentation, but um, I appreciate your, your consideration in the work you do, working to balance. Uh, how do we use this, the benefit structure to attract employees, but balance the cost as well? And it's no difference than the ba, no different than the balance we're hearing from so many other folks throughout this budget discussion, the balance between the services we're able to provide to the residents of Bloomington and, and the cost of them. So I, I appreciate that. Clearly, that's been a, a topic of discussion among our department heads and, and within these budget discussions as they've developed over the past few months and, and have reached to this point. So thank you for that, we appreciate those considerations.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciated the opportunity tonight, thank you.
Very good. I have no idea what's next. Two point one, uh, uh, information technology, there we go.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Amy Chaney, Chief Information Officer, and tonight I will present the two thousand and twenty-five IT fund budget. Like many of the budgets before us, I will take a rundown of our two thousand and twenty-five versus two thousand and twenty-four budget comparison. I'll look at the detail of the breakdown of the budget, staffing requests, um, addressing current and future needs, take a look at new initiatives and exploring potential revenue enhancers and evaluating potential service reductions and impacts. So here is our two thousand and twenty-five budget. I would note that we expect eight point nine two million dollars in revenues, the majority being from the internal charges to, from departments. Transfers from other funds dropped to zero, which were previously from the ARP or American Rescue Plan funds. Total expenses are projected to be nine point two million dollars. Increases are mainly in salaries, which includes some staff transition from city clerk budget, which we learned about earlier, um, to the IT budget. Materials and services are up eleven per, eleven percent, while capital outlay is decreasing by two hundred and ninety thousand, um, which is related to the fiber projects funded by ARP. Uh, we anticipate a deficit of three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, a smaller deficit than the two thousand and twenty-four budget. Looking at some of the detail, um, changes for the two thousand and twenty-five compared to two thousand and twenty-four. Key highlights include an increase in internal revenue from other departments and increase in interest income. The large increase in salaries and benefits include an employee reallocation from the city clerk's office for the data governance staff. And additional increases in professional services, software maintenance fees and internal charges are contributing to an overall net change of two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Okay, and looking at our long-term fund, um, the budget model, uh, software maintenance costs are continuing to increase. We see increases sometimes as much as twenty to thirty percent for the software that we're using, as well as adding new software each year. And we're also planning for the replacement of large systems like our assessing system, parks and recreation, and asset management in the next two to three years. Capital expenses are down due to, due to the two thousand and twenty-four being higher than normal with the ARP fiber projects. Looking at staffing, um, we noted that we have our data governance staff, which came over from the city clerk's office. And that happened in July. This includes our two staff members, and they handle a wide range of duties, including data and records compliance, data requests, training and education for city employees, and maintaining accurate records in the city's records and management systems. We'll also be hiring a contract network employee to assist with planned building improvement projects. This will be a one-to-three-year engagement. And since we don't know the needs beyond three years, we are not planning to request a full-time equivalent. Uh, and we are currently not um, asking for additional geographic information system staff. But it is identified in our GIS strategic plan. GIS, GIS is continuing to grow and touches all of our departments. Much of the information needed to make data-driven decisions is location-based. And then I'd like to take a look at our current org chart. This is actually effective uh, next Monday, so a week from today. We have a phased retirement arrangement that will take effect on that date. So we're making some changes um, to this, uh, the org right now. And then in coming weeks, uh, we'll be making some additional changes to accommodate that as well. Looking at some new initiatives, artificial intelligence, we talked a little bit about that earlier. So we are considering how we will use artificial intelligence or AI. Um, we've developed a policy for employees that addresses generative AI, and we also held an Imagine, Imagine AI World Cafe to get ideas from employees on how we can use AI to enhance services, streamline processes, and improve outcomes. A few examples that were generated during that time and that we're already using or, or plan to use are um, creating an internal bot for police officers to easily um, access policies and ordinances, transcribing meeting minutes, and drafting requests for proposals, so cutting down on staff time and on those tasks. The budget impacts are not fully known, um, but we do include funding for new technology that isn't forecasted each year in the IT budget. And this ensures that we can be flexible and innovative in our approach to technology, including AI. Uh, we will be replacing our fire suppression system in the um, the computer room. The current system is original to the building and could result in damage to our computer equipment if it were to, if it were to be deployed. The replacement would be a clean agent rather than water. Uh, we also have a planned firewall upgrade. This is a standard replacement every four years. And as I mentioned before, we did the fiber optics projects in two thousand and twenty-four. We had two large projects, and they connected fire stations two, five, and six, as well as Dwan Golf Course and the Western Maintenance Facility um, to the city's primary network. Uh, we will, we will replace the occupational health management software in two thousand and twenty-five, and this is used to track health information for the fire department and workers' comp claims and HR. These are highly regulated, this is highly, highly regulated information that requires standardized reporting. And then we're also looking to implement a data lake or data warehouse. So we'll be um, developing the requirements for that. And what that is, is it will allow us to consolidate our data into a single location that can be accessed by multiple systems. And this is part of our data governance roadmap. For revenue enhancements, um, I would just like to call out that we have been using ARP funds to the best of our ability. We've been, we've used it for GIS training for multiple staff, the fiber projects previously mentioned. And then we'll be implementing a virtual desktop that will address remote access needs for certain applications used by our employees. And then the last slide, um, you'll note that we generated this list using ChatGPT. So we're trying to use AI a little bit and help us out with some ideas of how um, IT could be uh, impacted if we had a reduction in funding. So insufficient funding could result in outdated software and hardware, which are more vulnerable to cyber attacks. Uh, we need to ensure that we meet regulatory requirements, including technology and data protection standards. Limited resources could delay responses to technical issues, increasing system downtimes. Without proper funding, the department might not be able to upgrade essential software or hardware. Underfunding can limit the IT department's ability to improve or expand online services for residents. Insufficient funds can prevent the IT department from planning for future needs. An underfunded department may be, may struggle to offer competitive salaries and benefits, and delaying necessary IT investments can lead to more significant urgent expenses in the, in the future. And then lastly, city employees have come to expect and rely on fast, friendly, and competent support. And with that.
Thank you, Ms. Chaney.
Thank you.
I've never heard the phrase data lake before.
Data lake, yeah.
Interesting.
Councilmembers nodding.
A, a couple of things, perhaps not tonight, but I think in, in the, at a future meeting, I'd like to hear more about the, the staff discussion about artificial intelligence and where that led and what ideas were generated, because I think that would be a, an interesting topic to, to talk about.
Absolutely, and we do have a user group that's forming that will also generate some more ideas.
Wonderful, wonderful. And you did mention, and uh, the data governance staff, and I know that's grown at least once or twice in the past few years in terms, uh, in, in reaction to the requests and, and the work that just needs to be done along the lines of data governments over the past couple of years. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, Mayor, thank you for the question. We do have a data governance um, council, um, which is identifying uh, various things that we need to do to shore up our data um, management throughout the city. So we're looking at things like um, retention, um, um, just how we manage our data from day to day. I don't know why I'm drawing, drawing a blank. But we do, you know, we have a, a regular meeting, and then we also have a data management team separate from that that focuses more on the training and, you know, making sure that our employees are educated about data.
And that's interesting, how many, so how many folks work directly on the staff? And I mean, from a team standpoint, how, how big is the group effort?
So Mayor, we have two um, data governance staff members. We're hoping to add a third, a part-time person to manage mostly the data requests and then, um, you know, helping in uh, departments with um, managing their records retention schedule, offline storage, that sort of thing. And then uh, the data management team, which is made up of folks from our legal department and IT and um, police. There's six of us right now, and plus, yeah, and Elizabeth Tol, Tolsmann's just joined us recently on that too.
Very good. Interesting, the, the staff required to handle all of that data now that we have at our fingertips.
Yes, and I did forget that the police department has a dedicated person as well.
Council, any questions? I'm sorry, who? I'll go last. Councilmember DeLisandro.
I just, I just figured you'd see me since I was right here. Exactly, not looking, not used to looking at me out of the right eye, huh? Thanks for being here, Ms. Chaney. Regarding your artificial intelligence, you mentioned that there's not a policy that we've created around the, the use of that. Did we create a, a dedicated um, bot for the city of Bloomington? Or is each department creating their own, like, uh, or are we just leveraging the public data? Bots that are out there? I'm just kind of curious about what are, are limitations and or, um, what's the strictness of our, our governance around that?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, um, so we were exploring the idea of a bot for the police department right now, um, using tools that are readily, readily available. Our policy around, around that particular thing is really, um, one, making sure that um, we're being ethical in how we're applying that, um, that we're, we're being efficient and that we're, you know, not spending money that is not available to us. So um, it's really making sure that our employees are checking with IT before they go off and try to develop something on their own.
I see, okay, that makes sense. All right, yeah, I'd love to just know a little bit more as you go through that. There's an, you know, there's always that open question about whether or not um, you should uh, build your model yourself against your own data, because then at least you have some control over hallucinations and other things like that versus, um, and that's more expensive, versus leveraging what's out there in a public sphere, which gets you in broader scope, but can introduce you to a lot of problems. So I'd just be very curious as we go along with that. I had one other question about that, which is um, related to our cybersecurity initiatives. Are we, um, you mentioned that we have an every-four-year cybersecurity firewall upgrade. Does that include kind of a, um, uh, maybe what I'd call an audit of, of a potential threats? And do we have a, uh, do we have an internal person or a third-party, uh, you know, person who is helping us with understanding what, generally speaking, the um, security threats are? So we stay up to speed on those? Like, I'm just kind of curious about how, how that's ramped up over the last year, knowing that we've seen a number of local governments specifically targeted by hackers and also pet thieves or whatever you want to call them, data thieves.
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, um, without sharing too much about our security posture, I will say that um, we do have external looks at what we're doing to make sure that we're, you know, doing the right thing at the right time. We're also continually scanning um, for threats, and we do have partnerships with um, with various agencies, more than one, that help us if we were to have um, that help us if we were to have some sort of a breach or something like that. We do have partnerships that can help us with those kinds of things.
Okay. Are the costs associated with that also increasing at the same rate as the other software increases that we're seeing right now? I know, for example, last year, I believe we had a very large jump in the expectations for what storing our body camera data cost us, right? I think it was 125 and went all the way up to 500,000 a year or something to that effect. Is that happening on the cybersecurity side as well, or are we able to hold the line there? Or do we have some kind of a buying power with other local governments that help us keep that down?
So we have a variety of tools that we use, and some of those are increasing, you know, not at the rate of the police system that you mentioned. But we are, you know, continually watching, are these the right tools for us? Can we continue to afford them? The state of Minnesota recently offered endpoint protection for us at a reduced rate for the first year. And then as it builds, it will build to the actual dollar amount that we would be paying on our own. But we, it was an entry point that we were able to get into, so. And then we're also a part of the Logis Consortium, which is Local Government Information Systems. And we do get some buying power with our know-before training for our security training for our employees. So, so we're, we're continually looking to make sure that we're getting the best deal that we can, but those prices, they, they increase without warning sometimes too.
Yeah, I understand. So, Mr. Mayor, my last comment then is, I, given that those things are real, I noticed in our Fund 7600 here that we have some, we have a decent red line going through the capital balance that's available to them, and these are areas where, you know, with, if we don't fund them appropriately, we get behind very quickly. And, and so I don't know if we need to make adjustments on that, or if you feel like there's something we should be doing differently that you want to pitch to us about that. But it does concern me a little bit if we don't have the, the budget that we need to make sure we're prepared for the threats accordingly. I, if that, maybe that's not how to read this, but I want to make sure we're not, red's bad, but maybe it's not so bad, I don't know. So I'm just kind of curious where our heads at on that.
If I were to, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember DeLisandro, red is bad. So, Kari, will you put the IT 7600 fund up there again? And I, I just want to take a moment to explain this because I don't know that we've spent too much time on it. But with these funds, you know, we have a long-term funding model. And the working capital balance down at the bottom and the goal that we have. So the, we have the, sort of the stoplight mentality here, right? So green is good, yellow is cautionary, red is bad, right, red is stop. So when, when we say that it's going into the red though, people often assume if you're going into the red, you're going negative. We're not going negative, so that's what the percentages are above them. It's our own coding methodology, so green is 90 to 100% or more. Yellow is down to, it's 80 or 70%, Kari, and then everything below that is going to be in the red. So this is one of those funds that gets my hair on fire. And you see, I have no hair left, so it's been an ongoing thing for a while. And it, the concerns, exactly. The concerns about cybersecurity or any of the other systems. One of the things that folks don't appreciate is how many systems our IT department is managing. And I don't know if you have that number off the top of your head, but how many discrete software and, and app programs are we running here?
It's generally about 150.
Yeah, yeah, to support the operations, right? It's a, it's a significant number. The other, the other point that I, I'd like to make is the discussion about data management. And if folks are at home wondering why we spend so much time on data management and data governments, there's a Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, which applies to local government. And it, it basically outlines all of our obligations for maintaining, recording, storing, reporting data. And we have data retention records and schedules that we have to keep. So it's a pretty significant task for those two people and hopefully two and a half if we're able to add another person to manage all of the data that's being generated by 670 employees, right? And it's a significant undertaking, so, you know, I, I don't want people to just wonder why, why we spend time on this. We're obligated to do it from a statutory and a legal perspective, so.
And to that point, Mr. Brugge, not just the data retention, but responding to Data Practices Act requests and being able to provide the information as it's, and being able to, you, you mentioned the, the data person within the police department. And so with, if there are questions on body camera or, or records or, or it all kind of, it all works in the work that we do and the work that's expected of us if and when the public or another government agency asks for it.
And that, that is an area, Mayor, especially in the area of data requests. You know, we, we spend a significant amount of time doing redaction because we have to make sure that when we are providing requested data, that we're not providing private or confidential data. And so our staff has to go through and do redaction on all those. One of the areas where there's an AI opportunity are the tools that are available to assist redaction. And that's one we're going to walk slowly into just because there, there's such a liability exposure for us to slipping up that, you know, I, I think it's going to take us a while before we trust the machines to get it right for us, right? So it's a trust but verify is I think we'll have better redaction systems, and we still have to go back in and double check.
Counsel, additional questions, councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I would have to echo councilmember DeLisandro. Besides police and fire, IT is my next biggest concern. I mean, everyone's aware of, have heard of the change healthcare attack that happened this year that impacted pharmacies, impacted way like broader than we expected, and people are still digging out of it. So very concerned that we're, our, our budget is looking like this moving forward. One piece that I have seen in just my work is in the private sector is a market shift towards the cloud. So I'm interested to understand where we are in terms of like statutory regulation, moving from on-premise to the cloud and what impacts that could have financially, systems-wise, process-wise, that kind of thing.
Mayor, councilmember Muah, thank you for the question. So in regards to cloud, that is something that we consider when we replace systems. And we are actively being forced to adopt cloud strategies for some of our vendors where they're, you know, just saying that they no longer, you want to support the on-premise version. So obviously, if we want to continue to use those systems, that's what we're going to do. One thing that we do very carefully look at is, is it a government, can we use it as a government? You know, for example, Microsoft, you know, they might offer it to their private sector, but it's not quite ready for government yet. One of those things is Copilot right now. We're kind of waiting to see, is that something that we can deploy? Not yet, because it's not quite ready for government. So that's something that we're constantly monitoring, you know, can we use those? You know, because we have CGIS data, HIPAA data, we want to make sure that we're, you know, addressing those concerns before we jump to the cloud.
Thank you.
Counsel, additional questions? And, and I will say, councilmember Muah and councilmember DeLisandro, the, the concern over working capital balances is a legitimate one. Again, understanding that red does not mean in the red, it just means less than what we had hoped. But I think it, it might be something for us to continue to consider as we look at a more universal approach to working capital balances. Whether we, we group one or two departments or have a, a citywide working capital balance and apply it to needs as they come up. Where there's red in IT, there may be green in other areas that could then shore it up. And so to look at it a little bit more holistically, might be way, might be a way to address this. Any additional questions, counsel? Thanks for being here with us this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Janine.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Janine Hill, Communications Administrator. I will skip the agenda, it's exactly the same as Amy Janey. My content is different. Here's the 2025 budget request for Communications Fund. We project total revenues to increase by approximately $354,000 compared to 2024. Key revenue drivers include an anticipated rise in property taxes by $300,000 and an increase in PEG fees by $35,000. On the expenditure side, total expenses are estimated to grow by a little over $157,000. The primary increases are seen in salaries and benefits up by $89,000 and in capital outlay by $23,000. Overall, the net balance of 2025 is positive with revenues exceeding expenditures by a little over $40,000. There we go. This slide provides a more detailed breakdown of the budget charges for 2025 compared to the 2024 budget. Key increases include an additional $300,000 in property taxes, $35,000 in PEG fees and $89,000 for salaries and benefits, which includes funding for an intern position. We also have $19,000 allocation for website improvements, improvements focusing on usability, multilingual support and ADI compliance. Here, did I skip one? I didn't go for it, sorry. Okay, here's the long-term model. It outlines Communication Fund actuals from the past two years along with an estimated, an estimate for 2024 and projections from 2025 through 2029. For 2025, the budget request totaled a little over $2.3 million in revenue with expenditures projected at $2.29 million, resulting in a net gain of $40,244. Looking ahead, the conceptual budget for 2026 shows revenues of $2.48 million and an increase in expenditures, leading to a net loss of $49,000. Key focus areas include maintaining a working capital balance above our set goal, which is low in 2025 and 2026, but we aim to achieve our working capital goal by 2029. This org chart shows all of Communication staff and positions in the special revenue fund in orange. Eight of those positions are full-time. Communications also funds 50% of the full-time administrative position. The light blue staff are Support Services, Internal Services Fund, a separate fund overseen by Communications. This includes five part-time staff for, who handle the print shop, mailroom and information desk. We are recommending no change for staffing in 2025. We reclassified two positions last March and added media and public relations duties. We also hired a part-time intern to assist with writing for the briefing, news releases, other communications and social media posts. Of note, we added these new responsibilities and service while continuing, continuing to deliver all of the high-quality communications residents have come to expect. We will send out an RFP soon for Targeted Media and Public Relations for Economic Development for Bloomington, which I will talk about a little bit later. That in, may result in the future for a need for additional full-time position or reclassification from, from part-time to full-time for one of the current positions, but we will assess that position as we move forward. I'll now show you some new initiatives and enhanced service deliveries that we are working on and some of the success we're achieving. I'm excited to share with you the tremendous work our communications team has been doing to enhance our service delivery and outreach to the community. By reclassifying, by reclassifying two positions to focus specifically on media pitches and the outreach, it has enabled us to leverage our existing team's expertise and enhance our media relations efforts. Our communications team meets regularly to collaborate on outreach and digital communication strategies. This coordinated approach has resulted in consistent media wins to showcase Bloomington and its people. Our targeted approach has secured positive coverage on local TV, print and radio outlets. And some stories have even been picked by national platforms such as Axios and Yahoo News. With an increased media presence, we've been able to share Bloomington's story with thousands of residents and the broader community. And you mentioned that earlier, councilmember Muah. By realigning our resources, we've elevated the city's profile and ensured that the community stays informed about the exciting things happening here. A few recent examples include Hatch Bloomington Business Competition. It had 32 mentions in outlets like Star Tribune, CARE 11, Fox 9, KSTP, MSP Business Journal. Our Pride Event in Bloomington also had 32 media mention in CARE 11, KSTP, Fox 9. Best in Glass, Bloomington's Best in the State, and, and State Drinking Water Award, which was a real winner. 13 mentions in the traditional media. And our Nine Mile Creek Corridor Renewal Community Engagement, also Fox 9, Sun Current, AOL.com. All in all, this was $8.8 million in public publicity revenue or value in the last six months. Additionally, we've been applying our communications expertise to social media presence, particularly on Instagram. By aligning our content with our organizational purpose, we've seen a positive response from the community with growing engagement and impressions. We've seen significant positive results by focusing on engaging the community through compelling visual storytelling. Our strategy of using dynamic images to, to promote Bloomington as a vibrant, welcoming community has resonated well with our audiences. By focusing on visual content with minimal text, we're ensuring our posts align with what Instagram users value most, beautiful and engaging imagery that tells a story. This targeted approach has led to noticeable increases in both engagement and follower growth. Just since last March, we've experienced a 28% increase in follower growth, reaching more than 5,400 followers to date. So far in 2024, our Instagram account has had 1,010 link clicks compared to 66 clicks in all in 2023. And we're not afraid to have a little fun in order to engage our audiences. One of our most recent successful posts that really struck a chord with the community exemplifies how our strategy is working. It featured members of the fire department dancing to a song that was trending on Instagram. It's amazing what a 14-second video can do. Since it was published on September 3rd, the reel has been viewed more than 162,000 times with 4,650 likes, and we gained more than 600 followers just since this was posted. 96% of the viewers were not yet following the city's Instagram account. Of note, we also just received an article request from the League of Minnesota Cities Magazine on an upcoming Message Matters featured story entitled "How to Successfully Use Humor in Government Communications." League staff said Bloomington does a great job with this, especially on its Instagram page. Look for the article in the January, February issue. Over the past year, we have been working closely with staff throughout the city to, to develop and help implement more than a dozen communications plans for city projects and initiatives. These plans cover topics such as Bloomington Forward, our park system, economic development, the Hatch Program, fiber optics infrastructure and our Urban Forest Plan, just to name a few. We have worked with subject matter experts across the city to identify targeted strategic messaging and to plan outreach efforts for communicating with the media and the public. I'm proud of the work our communications team has been doing to elevate the profile of Bloomington and ensure our residents are well-informed about the great things happening in our city. This strategic proactive approach to communication is a key part of our efforts to enhance service delivery and community engagement. I'm confident the investments we're making in communications will continue to pay dividends for the city of Bloomington. As identified in our Public Relations, Communications and Marketing Strategic Plan and in line with the Port Authority's overarching goals and anticipated five-year strategic plan, we have plans to hire an outside consultant to provide public relations and marketing services for community development, Port Authority Economic Development Initiatives. The funds, which came from strategic priorities this year, will be used for public relations and marketing consulting services over a two-year period for the purpose of promoting. and marketing consulting services over a two-year period for the purpose of promoting business development, retention, and expansion of business within our community and equitable economic growth in Bloomington. The service could also help with positioning and branding to help achieve the goals of the Bloomington Economic Partnership. This graph shows where communications revenues come from. 50% from cable franchise and PEG fees, 30% from property taxes, 9% from IT transfers, and 4% from other income. We are in the negotiating stages with Comcast on a new agreement that expires at the end of this year. We know that we will secure franchise and PEG fees for the term of this agreement. One change that I can speak to now is that the PEG fee will change from a flat fee per subscriber base to a percentage fee based on revenues. This will likely double the funding we receive for capital purchase and maintain subscribers as subscribers continue to cut the cord. And it was in front of the Minnesota Legislature last year, and it will begin this year. The Equal Access to Broadband Act would allow local governments to negotiate franchise agreements for use of public rights-of-way by broadband providers that are currently adding fiber optics in the city. Along with many other Minnesota cities, Bloomington has a decades-long franchising cable television providers. This bill will modernize legislation to ensure that the benefits of franchising will continue for our residents, businesses, schools, and nonprofit organizations. Bloomington will again be supporting this bill along with the League of Minnesota Cities, many other cities, and our partner organizations. We have a variety of ways to get information out to the community because people are using a variety of platforms to get their news and information. The council recommended the briefing, which is sent to 38,000 households and 5,000 businesses in Bloomington, be distributed monthly instead of bimonthly in 2018. And as a result, this has increased transparency and provided more information in a more timely manner. In the 2022 National Community Survey, 93% of respondents called the briefing their main source of city news. That was an increase of nearly 10% who said it was their main source of city news prior to the briefing being monthly. Notably, the briefing ranked the highest in this category, coming above the Star Tribune and the Sun Current. This stat illustrates how more frequent delivery of the briefing is informing readers with news and services and building community with feature stories about their neighbors. Readers also cited the briefing as one of the top ways they heard about the Bloomington Forward Initiative. It was great to see how an established, trusted, and well-read publication at just 27 cents per issue to print and mail saved thousands of dollars by not having to mail separate voter education materials and helped achieve a $155 million investment in the community. And with that, we'll take questions.
Well, thank you. Council questions, comments? Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks again for a great presentation. It's too bad we didn't have all the awards and everything, like last meeting. So I wanted to just mention that a number of years ago when we brought up having that come out every month, I was not very supportive of that. I was wrong. So I can admit when I'm wrong. I appreciate that you brought up the idea of transparency. And one of the things that I continue to be concerned about, you showed the overall revenues of about $1 million coming from that franchise fees, which was part of my concern as to why I was worried about going to every month, is that trying to fund that and that I know we're getting to the point to where at some point the cable stuff will reduce itself. And the other fear that I have as I look at just the newspaper business overall, and we see the Star Tribune kind of reorganizing itself to be a state newspaper, and then the Sun Current also kind of taking a different tact. And so I just get nervous about our ability to kind of ensure that transparency and where does the revenue come from. I mean, obviously, we could always just pay for it out of our taxpayer-funded, but I just wanted to see if you had any thoughts about that in terms of where that... You kind of alluded to it sort of in the presentation, but I wanted to hear a little bit more about that. And then just have one other thing I wanted to mention.
Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Lohman, councilmembers. We, I mentioned, we have a variety of ways to reach residents because they're getting their news and information a variety of ways. And we're constantly trying to assess where we're, you know, how we need to reach our residents. And we do the National Community Survey, that's one way. We always have a question in there about how people get their news. We also have had questions, specific questions about social media and what social media accounts people were using. We did this last session. And also putting surveys out for the briefing, for instance. When we first started doing surveys in the briefing, you would have thought that, and that transition to online communications versus print communications, you would have thought that people would transition to that, and the response that we got would have been, the numbers wouldn't be as high. But I was surprised at how people read, even people who get their news online all the time, and how much they read the briefing, the anecdotal, the calls that we get, the calls that other departments and division in the city get for response to the information that we put in the briefing with contact numbers. And we're just, we'll keep reassessing that and surveying to see where it best fits. And if there is a point, I think, where people aren't reading print copies as much, then we'll pivot and we'll, you know, look at where they are getting their news and information because we want to keep that level of communications and engagement to where it should be, in order for people to get the value of all the services that we're doing.
Well, thank you for that. One other part of that is the, you know, just in terms of the franchise fees, reducing any, you know, there's no easy, every city's facing that, but any comment on that beyond what you've already mentioned?
And before you comment, Janine, if I could ask, as I look at the fund sheet here, that franchise fees and PEG fees both went up by $20,000 from 2023 to 2024. And this after we're hearing all the gloom and doom, how it's going to be headed in the wrong direction.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out because that was my next...
What's the deal there?
Mayor Bussie, councilmembers. Well, Comcast continues to remain a profitable company. We get 5% of a franchise fee from Comcast, and I think our, we don't see really that decline so much in the franchise fee. I mean, it's steady. The PEG fee, as I mentioned, for our next agreement has a percentage, and that will help ensure, at least we calculated it over the years and for the next few years, and it will double our PEG fee. And that helps fund our capital purchases. And then, as I mentioned on the slide, for looking at new revenues as well, we're looking at other ways that we can have the ability to franchise the broadband providers and have franchise fees come in to use for, you know, the services that we provide in Bloomington. So I think it's actually, it's looking good. And I have actually heard a little bit, who knows if cord-cutting is going to continue? We've said it for a long time. We've been saying it for years. It's cable TV, it's pretty, it's maybe going down, but profits are, you know, remain high, and that's a good outlook.
So your itinerary on franchise fees and PEG fees might not be quite written yet.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's math. So to Janine's point...
I was told there would not be math.
Well, there's going to be some math in a budget presentation. And to Janine's point, we can actually swag because we don't get subscriber numbers from Comcast. They're not obligated to provide that under our franchise. But we can do a pretty good estimate of the number of subscribers based on the PEG fee because of the structure of it currently. And so what we've actually seen over the last few years, it's about a 10% decline each year. That's the cord-cutting that's going on. So the percentage fee base, that change is a positive thing because it's going to stabilize that number. And on the franchise fee, the fact is that, for those of you who continue to take cable service, you know that your rates are going up, right? And so all the people who thought they were saving money by cord-cutting and going off to Netflix now have eight different providers and, you know, cumulatively are probably paying as much as they paid for cable, right? So, you know, they're able to continue to increase their rate, which is going to stabilize the franchise fee, at least for a time. But in terms of the long term, you know, as Janine mentioned, we're negotiating a 10-year franchise and talked to some folks at Comcast in this area of their business. And I think even our own attorney says this is probably going to be the last franchise that we will negotiate, just because the environment is probably going to dramatically change sometime in the next 10 years. And a lot of what's happening right now, I think, is still based on the National Telecommunications Act of 1996, right? And so it's been almost 30 years since Congress has addressed video services and, you know, the bundling of services and all of those things. So I think the likelihood is there's probably going to be something legislatively that happens in the industry in the next decade as well.
Thanks for that perspective, Mr. Brugge. And if I recall, I think it took five to seven years to negotiate that last. No?
We actually have a really good relationship.
No, 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 not our, not...
Oh, the Act of 96?
Yes.
That one took a while.
That took a while. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Mayor, I just had one last thing I wanted to mention.
Please, and then Councilmember DeLisandro.
I'll be as quick as possible here. I just wanted to mention, this really has nothing to do with you, but this detailed breakdown of the budget changes that's kind of been added all the way through is phenomenal. I just wanted to mention that because I know that for many years I have seen councilmembers ask questions that are related to this, and this has saved a ton of time. So I just want to, again, thank staff for including that.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If anybody ever wants to sit down over an adult beverage and talk about the 1996 Telecommunication Act, I would be thrilled. I date myself, but boy, did it cause a ripple effect in our community. And I'm very curious, candidly, about this legislative agenda that might be happening related to the way that we get pay for use of rights-of-way because that's long overdue, in my opinion, as somebody who uses Comcast for its internet service but not its telecommunications service, right? Because there's a difference now between an information service and a telecommunications service. So we'll talk about that another time. I had a couple of things, so I'm curious about that. I'd love to stay in the loop on that, Mr. City Manager, if there's a way for us to ensure that we're advocating on behalf of that at legislature. I think that that would be really great. So put that on the list for things to think about as we get to our legislative agenda. I would assume Senator Wicklund would at least experientially have a lot to say about that, given that her background is like mine, and she's a telecom nerd as well. I want to, two things. I think that the work that you all have done proactively with the media in the last six months has been great, and I just wanted to highlight that and thank you for that. I've gotten the chance to be involved in a couple of those things. We have incredibly talented people doing that work. You know, it's not very often that you get the chance to work with people of this caliber all the time, but Emily and Ben are just amazing. And the fact that you've allowed them to just kind of take advantage of our need to bring all of their experience and creativity to that, I just, I really want to highlight that and thank them, and thank you for your leadership on that front. I think, as we've talked in the last three years that I've been on council, I've been kind of frustrated by our lack of proactive communication and everything like that. And I know you mentioned we're going to get a PR consultant and everything. We're going to work on a lot of these things, which is awesome. This is actually a really, it was, in my opinion, a fairly straightforward and yet very, very powerful step in that direction. And so, thank you. I hope you keep doing it. It doesn't look like you're asking for more money to do more of it, but that's, you know, if you did, I would be supportive. But I just wanted to say thank you very much for that. I have noticed the difference as well, and I get, I get stuff from my family and friends all over the country and certainly all over the Twin Cities area who are like, "I didn't know this was happening in Bloomington." And I get to go, "I know, it's so cool," right? And that kind of thing. So it's been very, very fun to be a part of these proactive changes that have been made in the last six months. So thank you. I really just want to thank you for that. And then it sounds like, based on what you said, as we talked about red being bad in your communications fund here, it sounds like because of the changes that might come up, there's no concern here compared to some of the other things we've talked about in terms of fund balance being a little low or anything like that. Is that a fair...
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, I wouldn't say there's no concern. This is another one that concerns me. And ultimately, if we do see that there's a continuation in the industry trends like there has been in the last five years, we'll probably have to reevaluate this, right? And then it becomes a conversation for council because the, you know, the option that's available to maintaining our communications posture, where it's at, is to just increase the amount of property tax subsidy that goes into this fund. Because for a long time, we had a really good deal, is that this almost was entirely funded with franchise fees. And in the last seven, eight years, I think it started to change like a year or two after I got here, is the first time that we had to start putting some money into it. And I think we're going to continue to see that progress, and it's just a question then for the council, how much do you value it and how much do you want to put into it?
Well, to that end, as we think about that evaluation, the last thing I'll ask is if, not for this year, but for next year, what would it take to add another page to the briefing in terms of total costs? Like you said, it's 25 cents or 27 cents an issue to print and mail. But I think with all of the major initiatives we have going on and all of the long-term things that we have going on, having more space in that document, which is the most important document we have for the public, apparently, to provide updates on a regular interval, I think would be useful. So I would be willing to entertain that. I'm not speaking on behalf of everybody else. That was just my idea right now, but I think that we could consider that because I think it has real value for people. But I oftentimes will get people asking me, "Hey, what does it take to get an article in the briefing about this thing?" Right? For example, the work that we're doing on the school crossings, right? Somebody said, "Well, why didn't I read about that in the briefing?" And I'm like, "It was probably in there at some point." But, you know, these are kind of high-profile things that are really visible in the community, and if we can dedicate space to those things by adding another page to the briefing, I think it might be worth doing. Just don't know the numbers and don't know what the budget would be. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter, just one moment. I mean, understanding the way that the briefing and newspapers are put together, you don't just add a page. You add four pages. That's how it works. Yep. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I echo Councilmember DeLisandro's comments and very excited by the work that's been done. It's really great, and I've always been a huge fan of the communications team, and you guys continue to do great work. I have a question. Really, it's if you go back to the financials, and this is a very small dollar amount, so it's not a huge deal, but I guess I was just curious. So we increased the property tax request pretty significantly. I'm sorry, the actual, like, financial statement slide, which, Kari, I love those, so thank you for making them, incorporating those into these presentations over the years. So we're increasing the property tax contribution in the revenue section, and then we have revenues exceeding expenditures by $40,000. And so I guess I'm just curious, like, in your decision-making there, you know, did you consider, you know, making that zero and just taking less property taxes? I'm just curious why the surplus there.
So, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, the reason for that is that working capital balance in the communications fund. So '22 and '23, you can see, like, '22, there was a loss, '23, there was a loss. We're estimating a loss for '24. So we are bringing down that working capital balance pretty low. And so even with that increase, we would be, I mean, we're already in the red, meaning we're below 80%, but we're coming down to like 48%, 30%. So we were just trying to keep that working capital balance at, so it wasn't going to, so it wouldn't go negative and just have a cushion if we're not as positive as what we are seeing for those franchise fees and PEG fees.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, given the conversation that we've had related to those fees, it seems like then you don't anticipate needing to do that for the next, like, the following years to help replenish those funds, in terms of using the property taxes to... help replenish those funds that, in terms of using the property taxes to do that? Or maybe?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Carter. Well, right now, we do, we are forecasting increases in property taxes and more revenue than expenditures to build up that working capital balance. But as the mayor said, we are, we are doing that project with our GFOA, and we're kicking that off on Wednesday with looking at all these working capital balance goals. I will say for the communications fund, we have a pretty modest goal right now, so it's not as high a reserve as some of those other funds. So we're really just very carefully trying to keep this fund positive and not have the cash go negative.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just to walk people through the chart again, so under the revenues, the third one down is property taxes, and under the first yellow highlighted column, the 2025 budget request, that's where you see the increase over the '24. That's the $300,000 that Kari detailed. And then you see for '26, conceptually, an additional $100,000, and then a year after that, an additional 50 before holding it flat for a couple of years. So we are forecasting additional taxpayer subsidy to keep it going.
I think it would be helpful, just so that the public is like, just really, it's very clear for people that when we have, when revenues do exceed expenditures, that there is a goal related to those, that surplus. Do you know what I mean? So that it's not, so that people listening aren't going to ask the same question, right? Like, why would you do that? Why are you increasing property taxes? So just to have like a bullet point in the slide that says that the surplus will go to replenishing some of those capital balances. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? To Councilmember Carter's point, and this is a question, I think, for Kari or even Mr. Brugge. So when, when we first expanded, we went from every other month to monthly briefing. That's when I remember that extra property taxes line being put into the overall city budget. And I understood it made sense because we did it that first time, and I think a lot of folks thought, well, this is kind of an experiment, we'll see how this goes, and if this needs to continue and so on. It just seems odd to me now that within this specific fund, but also in our, in our bigger picture, look at our city expenditures, that communications line is always there, kind of called out. And it seems it would make sense to just, it's been close to a decade now. Let's just assume this is going to be part of the communications budget now and put it into the communications budget and not necessarily call it out every time we have this budget conversation. Thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, just to make sure I'm clear, is it sort of suggesting that we just roll communications into our, into our general fund, and then you account for the franchise fees coming in there? So that communications essentially is an embedded function that doesn't have a separate budgeted fund? Or a separate enterprise fund?
If I'm saying this correctly, I'm thinking the other direction. So, for example, in the city manager's office, it's funded by property taxes.
Yep.
And we don't have a specific line at our high-level city budget discussion. We don't have at a high level that says city manager's office.
Right.
Like we do communications.
Right.
How do we, how do we make that happen, that the communications isn't called out and it's just part of the assumption that it's going to be part of it?
Yeah, it's because this is a separate fund that we continue to do that. And before we had the property taxes rolling in, we set it up that way because there's a, an expectation from your franchisee that you are utilizing the revenues associated with the franchise for the purpose of what you have assigned that fee to, right? And so we have historically said we're going to take the franchise fees and put them into communication activities, so they're not going to build a fire station or something like that, right? So now the conditions have changed, to your point, and we've got seven, eight years now of history where, you know, we have mixed revenues coming into this fund. I think that we should probably take a look at the, maybe next year as we go into it, and it may even be a discussion point with our attorney and the Comcast representatives just to see if that is still a particular point of sensitivity for them. You know, when we made that decision to put property taxes into this fund, I think that Netflix was still being delivered in the mail. It was pretty close.
It was pretty close. Thank you. Appreciate that explanation. Just something to think about, I think, as we move forward. Council, additional questions? Very good. Well, thank you. Thanks for the update and the great work that the communications team has done over the past year, outstanding work. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Council, if I'm reading my agenda correctly, I think we are through everything unless we skip something on the way through.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and because this is a special meeting and we don't have any other agenda items listed, we can't do our usual round the horn or things like that. So we are at the end of our agenda unless you have any other budget questions related to the information presented tonight.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to quickly just thank you again, Kari, for all the great work that you did. Every single one of these things we saw tonight has your footprint on them. I know that for a fact. So for all the work that each one of you did in presenting here, I know that Kari and her team is working really hard, so thanks very much for that. It makes our life a lot easier, so much appreciated. Just wanted to make sure we got that shout out.
Thank you. That is very appropriate. So yes, thank you. And I think you were talking fingerprint as opposed to a footprint, but I know what you're talking. I think we were all there. I get it. Council, any other budget-related questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.